Mayor Porter?
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Here.
Councilmember Barry?
Here.
Councilmember Clay?
Here.
Councilmember Simmons?
Loveless.
Councilmember Snipper?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Are there any council comments or announcements? I'd just like to start real quickly by just letting people know that yesterday was the 10th anniversary of unification. We're going to have a resolution on it, but if anybody didn't hear me say that earlier, we have a small celebration going on upstairs. If anyone would like to run upstairs and get a piece of cake here, welcome to do that. And also to let you know that the council, many members of the council last week were at the convention of the Maryland Municipal League. It was a very good convention. I'm sure other council members are going to talk some about the kinds of things that went on, but there were some very useful workshops, as there always are, in addition to discussions about various things that the MML is doing. When we go to these kinds of conventions, I think we go for a couple of reasons. One is for the information that we gain from the workshops and the presentations, but the other is to stay in touch with other municipal officials from around the state. Many of us learn a great deal from our colleagues, and it's a good way to find out what other municipalities are doing and to be able to get more information that we can use in Tacoma Park. So it was quite a useful conference. Does anyone else have any council comments or announcements?
If I can just follow up for a minute with a comment or two on the Maryland Municipal League Conference. I wanted to compliment my colleague, Councilmember Simmons, on the excellent workshop that he moderated on immigration. That was an excellent one. And during that one, there was also the chance to learn from our colleagues sometimes maybe what we don't want to do, and I found it interesting that there's a municipality close by where the council will listen to and consider an appeal on any ticket or infraction or fine that has been written in the city and will actually, you can appeal it to the council. And I thought, oh, I don't think we want to go there. It was also very impressive and very helpful that the governor, the lieutenant governor, and all of the cabinet secretaries were there, and there was an opportunity to talk with them one-on-one about any particular issues that people had, and that was a very helpful session. And I was also very appreciative of the fact that County Executive Ike Leggett was there for the whole conference and was very accessible, and it was good to have an opportunity to talk about any number of issues with him as well.
Colleen?
Before I left for North Carolina, which was before the MML conference, I got a couple of emails from folks on Auburn Avenue, and they are having more intense issues related to the property at the corner of Ethan Allen and New Hampshire. We've discussed this before. It's the trash concern, and there's a large amount of trash that has been blowing down from that property down the street. And so I've been driving through there since I got the calls just to verify and to get a sense of how much it is. And there's definitely, for the first two houses, a significant amount of trash that's coming around the corner from there. And that end of the property is just getting to look pretty bad. I know that the property is for sale. There's a large "for sale" sign on the front of it. And I know that the city has gone above and beyond and has cleaned the front end of the property. I know public works have been doing that, even though we usually don't do that, just because it's a gateway project. But it's continuing to deteriorate. I don't know that there's anything, that there's a lot we can do, but I'd like to put it back on the radar.
Any other council comments?
Just wanted to mention the July 4th parade that I'm pleased we will be marching in on Wednesday, and I'm looking forward to that. I also wanted to bring to the council's attention the issue of the mansion initiative that I believe we should undertake. And you may not have seen it yet, but I did send this afternoon an information sheet, and I'm looking forward to the council discussion on that topic.
We had a fabulous grand opening of the new farmer's market at the crossroads last week. Many of my colleagues were there, and it was great. We had a beautiful day, a huge turnout for it. The farmers were in 7th Avenue, and it's going to be repeated. Not the ribbon cutting and the salsa music, unfortunately, but every Wednesday, rain or shine, the market, which is in front of 7676 New Hampshire Avenue, will be in full operation from 4:00 in the afternoon until 7:00, so please drop by, get your papousas, get your smoothies with fresh fruit, get your freshly brewed coffee, get your vegetables. It's really a great assortment, and all brought to you by mostly minority farmers. Couple of items in Ward 6. One, if you've been inconvenienced by the unholy noise coming out of a church just behind New Hampshire Avenue, thanks to Barb and the police chief, we'll be putting a stop to that, I suspect, fairly soon. And those people who have been inconvenienced over the months as this has been going on, hopefully that'll be resolved fairly soon. And I can't think of the other item, but if I do, I'll bring it up later. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. First, I would just like to recognize State Delegate Heather Mizur with us tonight.
She's going to be quite of a later...
Okay. Anyway.
Well, you can recognize her twice.
I just wanted to say how good it is to have her back in here. I'm used to her sitting next to me here at the dais, and I'm glad to see you back with us. But of course, I like my current colleague, too. All right, let's start over again. For those of you who miss Patty Lovelace, who's with us to speak most weeks, I want to let you know that he's down protesting in favor of the abolition of the death penalty. He's on the steps of the Supreme Court and has been every day for the last four days, and he spent the night, last night, down there. So he said he would be with us again next Monday. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one other thing. I wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that July 1 was the start of the new fiscal year, and therefore, on the county level, that meant that the money that was appropriated for the rebuilding of the Tacoma Park Fire Station is available, and the contractor has been chosen. And if everything went according to the contractor's plans, they were to start a little bit of the work today, doing a little bit of electrical work behind the auto clinic, so that that project, much to everyone's surprise, is actually happening. And it will take between 18 and 24 months for completion, and there will be a fair amount of disruption in Tacoma Junction, and the configuration at the junction will have a little bit of an extra twist to it during the construction, so that there should be a number of changes that will be noticeable. And this topic came up at the SS Carroll meeting a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that resulted from that discussion was a desire for a number of people to be involved in discussions about what will happen in the junction over the next number of years, both looking at how to deal with the temporary situation with the construction, and then looking at a more long-term solution for traffic in the junction, development in the junction, any number of issues that need to be addressed. And there is in process a request coming from SS Carroll to put together a work group to look at that. There have already been a number of people who have volunteered to participate in that. I know a couple of them are here and may be wanting to say something about it at Citizen Comment, but I just wanted to formally let everybody know that I think there will be an effort to reconstitute, a continuing effort going back more than 10 years, to address issues in the junction, and there's a pretty good amount of interest, a number of organizations and individuals, in being involved in that. So stay tuned.
Anyone else? All right, if there's no one else, we will move on to the public comment period. This is the time on the council agenda that's set aside for comments on items that aren't on our regular special session agenda. If you have comments on the special session items, I would ask that you hold those until we get to those items, but this would be the time for comments on the work session items or anything else you'd like to bring to the council's attention. And I'd ask when you come to the microphone if you'd identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Ellen Cassidy, and I live on Cedar Avenue. I want to thank Joy Austin Lane and Laven Snipper for their interest in the McMansionization issue. Recently, while walking through our neighborhood, I noticed that a house had been torn down and that a new, much larger house was under construction there, that I think is oversized and out of character with its surroundings. The trend toward tearing down existing houses and building much larger houses is occurring in many local communities, and residents of these communities have been dismayed to find that the character of their neighborhoods is being radically changed by structures that adhere to all existing regulations. This trend is not widespread in Tacoma Park yet, but I believe it'd be wise to anticipate the possibility rather than try to catch up later. Our tree ordinance has helped to preserve the distinct character of our community, and our historic district regulations have also been effective. Now the question is whether existing regulations are sufficient to protect our community against McMansionization. At first, this issue may seem to be a slippery one, a matter of taste that does not easily lend itself to regulation, but I think that that's not the case. We pride ourselves on our diverse mix of tastes and housing styles, and we should continue to do so. But government bodies across the country have successfully crafted common-sense regulations that do allow new construction and rehabbing while also preserving the character of the community, and these measures have made a huge difference in many communities. The new regulations passed in other municipalities have included specifications about maximum percentage of tear-down allowed, minimum lot size, front side and rear setbacks, gross square footage, floor area ratio, sky plane requirements, which have to do with overhangs, maximum height of building, obstruction of view, protection of trees, and the total percentage of lot acreage used for the footprint. I would like the council to address this issue, and I believe first steps might be to make contact with the Montgomery County Council, which has established a task force on this matter, and also with local officials such as those in Chevy Chase, who face a similar situation, have begun to take the same kind of steps that our city might consider. The goal would be to find out how our city could work with other local municipalities and with the county and the state to protect our community in a way that best serves our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I do think that's an important issue, and I have been in conversation with some elected officials from other municipalities about this issue, and there is some discussion going on with Montgomery County. As you mentioned, Montgomery County did amend their ordinances to allow municipalities to put more restrictive zoning on, and there has been some discussion among several of the municipalities as to how they can do that most effectively within the requirements of the zoning laws, and I think that's a good suggestion. Yes?
Hello, my name is Amy Maloney. I am an employee in Tacoma Park on 6930 Carroll Avenue, and my husband is a small business owner in Tacoma Park. And I'm here with some members of our impeachment group, just to say hello again, and to remind those viewing, those listening, that we are still working very diligently on our project. Our project. TacomaParkIBC.wordpress.com, that's our website. One piece of information that we have is another representative from our Congress has signed on to Dennis Gucinich's bill for impeachment, and he's from the state of Washington, Jim McDermott. Yes, so that's 10 that have signed on, and little by little, we're just hoping that we can get this thing passed through this summer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and as I'm sure you know, it's been scheduled to come before the council on July the 23rd. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Eileen Sobek. I live on Carroll Avenue, and I wanted to bring to the council's attention the fact that Washington Apetist Hospital is actively looking into what to do with their property after they leave the city, and they have hired a consulting firm that is talking to individual members of the community, and I do commend them for that, and I have been a participant in that. But I don't think that the city and the residents should see the decision about what is the best thing for the community to W.A.'s judgment. I think that we have anticipated that we would have an active role in that ourselves as a community, and since W.A. started to look at it, I think it would be wise for us to do that as well. The city had committed to forming a committee or a task force to look into that, and I would urge you to do that sooner rather than later, and I would like to be a participant in that. I know that Mayor Porter raised, when she came to the annual meeting of the Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood Association, the possibility of adding that to the mandate of the already existing committee, and I must respectfully disagree with that. That committee is looking at what the health care needs of our community are, and that was a concern that a number of people in the community raised when W.A. said it would be leaving the community but might leave some services behind. I think the people who are on that committee now are very dedicated, and they have an expertise that's well-suited to that mandate. I think the question of what to do with the property and what the community's interest in how that property could be used, to the extent we have the ability to influence W.A. on that, brings a completely different set of interests and expertise to bear. And speaking for myself, I have no expertise in what the health care needs of our community are and how to assess that, and given all of the choices and demands on the time of citizens like myself, it's not something that I think that would be worth, I would not be contributing a lot to that process. I think we really do have two very separate issues that need to be addressed and kinds of information that need to be gathered. So I think the time has really come to form that second committee, and I would really urge the council to do that sooner rather than later. I think one thing that the W.A. consultant said that I think was very wise was that the longer the timeframe, the more thoughtful the process and the input is on the front end, the more likely we are to work towards some kind of consensus and some sort of, not trying to realign interests that are sort of heading in opposite directions. So if I can contribute, I would like to, but I really think the time has come to form a second committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We actually have that discussion scheduled on our agenda for the work session later in the evening, and I hope you'll stay for that also, so you'll sort of know where we are on that. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and city manager. I'm Jim DiLuigi. I reside at 7106 13th Avenue and also own a business property at 6 Grant Avenue. I'm here basically to talk about the Gilbert Wood redevelopment at Laurel and Eastern, but I know that's coming later, but I did want to follow up on Councilmember Williams' comment about the junction and thank him for his leadership in coming to the SS Carroll meeting and his comments tonight. I'd also like to add that as a business owner on 6 Grant, we have received information from WSSC, a very imminent project, which was supposed to start early spring. I think we've kind of passed that date, so probably any day now, and according to Murphy, as soon as the firehouse project starts, WSSC will come in there and start tearing up roads as well. So for the city manager, welcome to Tacoma Park, so melee of what's likely to happen, and please keep your eyes open for all of that sort of thing. I will be glad to volunteer and help on the junction committee, and we look forward to working together with people in that regard if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that offer. Anyone else?
My name is Sabrina Baron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. I'd like to support what Eileen Sobek had to say earlier about encouraging the council to form the second committee, as the council has formally stated, formerly, I've been on vacation, the vocabulary's not working right, formerly stated was its intention to do. I think Eileen is absolutely correct in pointing out that there are two different sets of skills, two different areas of expertise required here, and health care and land use are pretty far apart. I think my organization had expressed interest and willingness earlier to be involved in that effort, and we continue to be willing to do that, so I would encourage the council to follow the city manager's good advice and to appoint that second committee sooner rather than later. I'm also glad to hear the issue of mansionization being raised, which is something that's been of concern to those of us in the preservation community for a long time. The best protection is historic district protection, historic district legislation. Historic Tacoma is hoping to have a community forum at some point in the near future about mansionization. Montgomery Preservation, Inc. has been working very hard on this issue, and we have been working with them, the countywide umbrella preservation group, on this issue. But we would like to have a forum here because it clearly is becoming a more pressing issue in our community as well. And as just a footnote, we're also hoping to have a community forum in the near future about how to retrofit historic houses for green building and energy-efficient building materials. So I hope the council will give due consideration to the issue of mansionization. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would let us know when those things are going to come up, we can probably help you publicize them, too. Anyone else?
Mayor Porter, if I might, I do want to go on record in support of the impeachment resolution. I know that that's coming up on the council's agenda on the 23rd. However, my family and I will be away that week. So if I were here, I would be surprised. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, we will move to the city manager's update.
Just a few items this evening. I did want to mention to the council that I received notification last week from James Efnod Construction, the contractor for Phase 1 of the Community Center project, that they do anticipate undertaking the work to correct the stormwater management problems in the rear parking lot sometime during the week of July 16th. As soon as we get a little bit closer to that date, I should have a more firm schedule, and I'll share that with the council as soon as I become aware of that. And I also just wanted to mention to Councilmember Simmons that I have not forgotten his request for an update on which items are still outstanding relative to the Phase 1 work. We were waiting to get an updated punch list from the architect. I have received that, and I'll get that out to the council later this week.
Thank you.
Unrelated to the Community Center project, I did want to share with the council and with the community, we've had some on-and-off problems with the decorative streetlights in Old Town. Some of you have probably seen that, they're on sometimes and they're off. Our contractor apparently has been having some discussions with Pepco, and they have decided today that they need to replace the system-wide solar sensor and basically install individual sensors on the lights. That work is expected to start later this week and continue on into next week. While that work is ongoing, the lights will be on 24 hours a day while they're making their repairs, so if any of you notice that the lights are on non-stop, we are aware of it, and it's on its way to being fixed and hopefully some progress. The last item I had, and this is sort of potentially bad news, is the council may recall that back in the fall, you all had approved a bid for the last part of the Carroll Avenue Street State Project. And you may recall that we had some difficulties getting through the state process in terms of getting the contractor approved. There was a lot of question whether or not that was to go through the Board of Public Works, and there was a lot of discussions with the state attorney general's office. As I reported to the council several weeks ago, that issue finally got resolved and the contractor got approved. Regrettably, so much time had transpired between when we had awarded that bid and when we were able to get approval from the state, that he did notify us on June 27th that due to a change in his workload as well as some changes in supplier prices, that he was declining to service a contractor for that project. The staff and I've had some initial discussions, we're examining what options we may have in terms of potentially going back to one of the other firms that submitted a bid at that time. We'll continue having those discussions this week, and I hope to have more information for the council next week. Obviously, what we'd like to try to avoid is having to rebid this project, if at all possible. I think one of the complicating factors will be, we're very cognizant that the street festival will be taking place in the fall, and then once again, we get back into the holiday business season, which was something we had been so desperately trying to avoid. So I don't have a lot of other information this evening, but I did want to share that with the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, I do have a question about that. If it does have to go back out to bid, then is there additional review by the Board of Public Works?
My understanding, Councilmember Austin Lane, is that they do have to approve each individual contractor. I think it would probably have to go back, but I think since the issue has been somewhat resolved in terms of just the age of the community legacy funds, I'm hoping that that would help expedite any further review by the state, as well as the fact that we obviously have come to La Francho, who might be able to provide some assistance in expediting this. So I hope it will not take that long.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? For the city manager?
Thank you.
All right. We now will move at our special session agenda. What I would like to do, since we do have one of our District 20 legislators here, I would like to go ahead and take the resolution recognizing the District 20 legislators up Do you want to say something, Suzanne, as we?
I just wanted to bring this resolution to your attention. We had a very good session in this past year with three of four of our District 20 team being new legislators, and they jumped in with both feet, and they worked on some very difficult projects and had quite a few successes. As the resolution notes, we're hoping to build on their successes for a successful legislative... legislative session in 2008 and we know how difficult it will be because of the structural deficit that we're all facing. But I'm so glad that Heather can make it here today. Sheila Hickson actually was here yesterday thinking that the unification celebration was yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
She's on the Eastern Shore today, so wasn't able to join us. Jamie Raskin also was out of town, was very anxious to be here, and Tom Hucker also had emailed and said he was glad that we were thinking of him and that he'll be back. At this point, I don't know if you want to say something with Heather?
I would like to introduce this with a couple of comments. One is that I got a call from Jamie Raskin on Friday who very much apologized that he couldn't be here and said how pleased he was at the resolution, but he's on vacation with his family and since I know how difficult it is for elected officials to spend any time with their family, I think that's a good thing for him to be doing with his time. The second thing is to say how glad I am that Heather's able to be here. As everybody I'm sure knows, prior to Heather's being elected to the District 20, as a District 20 delegate, she served on the Tacoma Park City Council and so having her here is especially meaningful to us and we're so pleased that she's here. And what I'd like to do is I would like to go ahead and introduce the resolution.
Sorry.
Is there any council comments on the resolution? I would like to just say very quickly that I know from having been up on the other side lobbying the legislature for many, many years, how complicated it is to jump into the legislative mix and I am very pleased that all three of our new legislators seem to get their feet on the ground very, very quickly and were very effective. And I notice I didn't say even very effective freshman, they were very effective in the legislature last, this past year. And of course, we're also very fortunate to have Sheila Hickson who has been a legislator for many, many, many years, ever since she was a very young child and is now the chair of the very powerful Ways and Means Committee in the House. And so, we are very fortunate to have a mixture of very senior members and very active and enthusiastic freshman members. So, I'm very grateful that we've got such fine legislators in District 20. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything.
I want to second the mayor's points and also say how pleased I was to see the healthcare legislation that Heather put forward make it through and I believe Senator Raskin also had several bills go through. So, that really is a great indicator of how successful they are and will be in the future as well. Thanks for your efforts.
Well, I'm certainly happy that Heather's here. We miss Heather on Hayward, but I'm glad that she's still in Tacoma Park and I have enjoyed watching her first on the council when I was considering running and then in the legislature and all of the things that she does for Tacoma Park and now for the broader community of District 20 and I'm glad that you came down tonight. And I also want to say, just a note of appreciation for all of the folks in District 20 and the kind of support that they give to the city of Tacoma Park. It's really challenging to be a city in the state of Maryland and we need all the support that we can get from our legislature. So, I want to thank you for all of that you need to provide.
Thank you. You represent us well and please let us know how we in the community can support you in your coming years.
And I'd just like to say that I had a, I thought I had a good sense of how effective freshman legislators can be and the District 20 folks proved me wrong. I had lower, I had lower expectations than were realistic because all three new folks just really did an outstanding job of wading right in and getting bills passed and being very effective and I was pleasantly surprised and thank you for all the work that you all do and if you can pass our comments on to your colleagues.
I mean this with all due respect and certainly don't mean to be at all disrespectful, but as my daughter would say, "Go, girl."
Are there any public comments on this resolution? What we're going to do is we will, we will go ahead and vote on it and if it passes, we can give you a chance to respond if you would like. The resolution has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes unanimously. Is there anything you'd like to add, Heather?
Heather Mazir, 7200 Maple Avenue. It's an awkward thing, I can speak for all of my colleagues, to be honored for something that we just consider as our job is not expected but appreciated and we all carry a very strong sense that our work in government is a collaboration with you at the city level, with our constituents and neighbors and that it's public service. And so, really in many ways, we say thank you back for being part of a group of community activists that have given us the opportunity to do this work with you and serve the community. And I know that, again, not speaking just for myself, but I've heard my other colleagues in District 20 say the same thing, that it's the best job any of us have ever had. We're having a lot of fun at doing it as well and would encourage you to maintain the kind of communication that you did in this first session on the city's priorities into the future. We always want to do everything we can to fully represent Tacoma Park as a very important piece of District 20. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Heather. We very much appreciate the work that you and your colleagues do. Thank you. Now, we are moving on to another kind of talking about the job that someone does and we are moving on to the proposed appointment of the new Tacoma Park poet laureate. And I have to say that Ann Becker is my neighbor and I never knew what an accomplished poet she was. She doesn't have like poems all over the front of her house or anything, but I, when I read her, all of her accomplishments, I was very much impressed and not only is she a good neighbor, but she's a fine poet.
I'm John Borstow. I'm here as a representative of the Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Commission and a representative of the selection committee for the poet laureate and we are pleased this evening to extend our recommendation and advance our recommendation of Ann Becker as the next poet laureate of the city of Tacoma Park. Ann Becker is a poet. She's a deeply engaged teacher of poetry to people of all ages. She has deep experience as a curator and nurturer of other artists' work, publisher of poetry and someone who has been behind the recording of poets' work. So, she covers a lot of bases in terms of nurturing poetry as a community asset. With your resolution, Ann Becker will become the second poet laureate of Tacoma Park and we believe that she is a worthy successor to Don Berger, who has done a sterling job and that she will, in addition, sort of expand the definition of what a poet laureate can be for the city. So, with our recommendation, I'm pleased to introduce you to Ann Becker.
Welcome.
It's really a great honor to be here and to have the...
Could you pull the microphone a little closer to you? We don't have the best sound system in the world, apologies.
Does that work better?
Yes, I think it does. Thank you.
Doesn't change it. But it's a great honor to me. I've actually lived the majority of my life in Tacoma Park, that my family first moved here when I was two and a half years old and Ellen Katske, who spoke earlier, I actually have a photograph of the two of us. She was a neighbor. She was, when I was about three and she was about two and a half herself, sitting outside of her apartments on Baron Street, right off of Piney Branch Road, just down from Flower. And so, I feel like I really grew up in Tacoma Park and it's really nurtured me and given me, you know, such a rich life and a place to flourish and for my talents and my skill and to flourish. And I also feel that the people that I really want to touch most and are the people who are my friends and my neighbors and so this to me really means a lot. And the other thing, besides an honor, I feel like it's a wonderful opportunity to give back what I've, what I've received. And so, my project as poet laureate will be to offer free community workshops to people of all ages, beginning with children in elementary school, going through high school and adults and also to work with the people at the rehabilitation center. One workshop that I do is called Writing the Body, which is for people with experience with life-threatening and chronic illness as patient caregiver or family member. And so, that's a, that's a really important focus of my work at the moment. So, I'm just, I'm very pleased and I'm very honored and also just happy for poetry itself that in the city of Tacoma Park, that it's been decided, that it's really an important part of the community. And so, I'm really happy to, you know, to take my part and see, see how I can advance that and that really lots and lots of people secretly write poetry that, you know, and probably, you know, all of you sitting there have at some point. And, you know, it's not something that belongs to the English, the English students, you know, the college professors, but it really belongs to us all and so I'm, I'm really looking forward to reaching people who might not take a poetry course, but will be encouraged to sort of step out of the closet, shall we say, and pursue that, pursue that more. The other thing that I really want to work on also is to do more collaborations with the other artists in Tacoma Park, the visual artists, the dancers, the musicians, and so that's something that I'm going to be working on as well.
That's great. Does someone want to move the resolution?
So, ma'am?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments or thoughts from the council members?
Just, this really just brings me so much happiness to see yet another terrific initiative from the Arts and Humanities Commission. You know, it wasn't part of the council's direction to do any particular thing, but as a group, they have come to us with so many terrific initiatives and, you know, now that we're appointing our second poet laureate for the city, it really seems institutionalized. It seems like, you know, it's here to stay and it just gives me goosebumps thinking, you know, what the future holds. I think it's terrific. So, anyway, thank you very much for your service and your ideas sound terrific. I think our, our community will really embrace you.
Yes, I also want to thank the Arts and Humanities Commission because I've just been so impressed the last couple of years with the stuff that you've done. And I have loved the little poems around Tacoma Park that have been put up and that's just been an inspiration to folks. I've actually had several conversations about those poems from people just walking along and says, "Oh, look at that. Boy, is that cool." Very positive response from people to that and I'm just thrilled, just like Joy was saying. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this resolution? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. You are unanimously appointed as our poet laureate for the next two years.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. The next item is the resolution recognizing the 10th anniversary of Tacoma Park Unification.
Good evening. This is unification, part two for the evening. We just had a little reception before this council meeting that showed a video of the planning for lobbying for the right to unify into Montgomery County, to be one county.
A video of all those young people.
And yes, and we got to see us, we got, yes, and there was a great picture of me with my old big glasses, it's true. We were fortunate to have Ruth Abbott join us and cut a cake in celebration and it's very appropriate since Sammy Abbott was known to have kind of first championed the idea of erasing the line that divided Tacoma Park into two-thirds Montgomery County and one-third Prince George's County. Many people here can talk about the real struggle that there was for about 17 years in the state legislature to gain the right for a binding referendum to choose the county. And I didn't start really lobbying in Annapolis until the year after the success of that occurred. Having been there now for a number of years, the work that must have been done, it must have been tremendous. Really was tremendous, exciting efforts by so many people with the lobbying, with the lobbying effort. I really quite, I guess I think it was very impressive. I want to mention, kind of in the interest of speaking to the concept of the recognition we had several weeks ago for the work of public servants, that there were a lot of staff people that actually worked on the process of doing the transition. And I was given the title of unification coordinator once the vote went through that said we'd go into Montgomery County. And one of the things that I was kind of thinking to myself that didn't happen before that and has never happened since is that I was actually allowed by Bev Havada, the city manager at the time, to work on one topic for a series of months, precisely because it was such an enormous task. And I want to take just a moment and go and read the list of the 18 teams that worked on unification so that people have a concept about how massive of a change it was. We had teams that had staff from Montgomery County, Prince George's County, many from Park and Planning, from the state and from the school districts on the subjects of building and property codes, community and economic development, elections, emergency services, health and human services, housing services, legislation, mapping, park services and park maintenance, property records, public notification, public schools, recreation services, taxes, transportation services, unification events planning, utilities and zoning and subdivision. And these teams worked for a series of months, coming up with all the details about how do you transition people living in Prince George's County to living in Montgomery County. It was very important because many of the people actually had to take steps on their own to notify their insurance companies, to change their driver's licenses, et cetera, and it was really quite an effort. I just wanted to compliment and remember that Prince George's County did a tremendous job in facilitating that transition. Wayne Curry and his staff, Rosalind Fraser now works for the DC Office of Planning, but she was a key person, worked really hard on making sure things went smoothly. And I wanted to give an example of the work that they did so that they're appreciated. The Health and Human Services Team identified that there were a number of women who were pregnant, who were being assisted through the Prince George's County Health and Human Services Department and they worked with them so that they were able to keep their own doctors at Prince George's County's expense over the unification date. There were a variety of things that I thought were very sensitive, that didn't get any press, you know, that didn't really come to the fore, that I wanted to highlight, that are really appreciated by the staff people. Another key staff person that many of you know is Debbie Schiefer from the school district. She's currently working on the expansion plans for Tacoma Park Elementary School. She helped do the redistricting that was needed when all of the schoolchildren were coming from the Prince George's County schools into the Montgomery County schools. We also had some people who've left us. Marcia Kadish, who helped us tremendously, was a resident of Tacoma Park, worked for Park and Planning. She helped us very much on zoning and subdivision transition. And these people worked very hard. I don't think they got any credit for it. Their bosses probably didn't know how hard they worked on it, but as I was looking over the materials, kind of pulled out of the basement about this 10-year anniversary, I just wanted to let you know that there were and are a lot of good staff people. staff people that made the transition very smoothly, and we didn't have any glitches. Very few things have gone wrong in that 10-year period. And I really want to compliment my coworkers for just tremendous service. That's it.
Does someone want to move the resolution?
Remove.
It's been moved and seconded. I would just like to note that there was a resolution passed in 1997 thanking a number of people, and those people include Suzanne Ludlow, who as you said was responsible for doing that, for Lisa Schwartz, who was actually here earlier for the celebration and who was also in the planning department. It mentions, and this is very interesting, Owen Mack, but also it mentions Lieutenant Cynthia Kramer and Sergeant Edward Corsi. And certainly not least, it specifically thanks Bev Habada, who was the city administrator at that time and who was responsible for keeping all the balls in the air and things moving towards the deadline for unification. So we certainly thank her as well as all of the other people, all the other city staff and all the members of the community who worked so hard to make this happen. So I wanted to express our appreciation to all of them.
And I just wanted to recall for a moment my baptism into unification efforts, which was the night I was first sworn in as a council member. The council, after the election, came forward, got sworn in here. I think that meeting lasted all of about 10 minutes, long enough to do the swearing in. We adjourned, and then the council and everybody else who had gathered in the room drove to Rockville, testified before the, I think the Bye County
Oh, Bye County Committee.
Committee of the state legislature about unification and launched right into it. It was like there was nothing more important to do after the city council was sworn in, and there were four new members out of seven in that election. And everybody just dove right into it and came up for air many months later.
I also recall, and Suzanne reminded me that I had the dates wrong, but I believe it was the '93 election where Ed Sharp was running for mayor at the time, got a commitment from every single candidate for every single office that they would make unification their first priority if they were elected. And so I believe on that very first night when we were all sworn in to office, I believe the first thing that we did before we adjourned that night was to pass a resolution, setting up the policy of being in favor of unification and that we would, the council and the staff would work on making it a reality. And then as Bruce said, we did properly head on up to testify in favor. And it was actually the next legislative session, which would have been '94, is that the right date? Suzanne remembers, she's a much better member than I do. '94 that it actually got through after all those years of trying. But there were a lot of people who worked really hard on it. Sammy Abbott certainly deserves credit for initiating the idea, although Tom Gagliardo at the previous event that we just had revealed that he, when Sammy Abbott first said that he thought we should do this, Tom Gagliardo said to himself, "A great campaign platform, but he didn't think it ever happened." I think maybe even Tom, who was quite close to Sammy, might have underestimated Sammy Abbott's determination. But he certainly got the idea going. Ed Sharp deserves credit for, in the '93 election, sort of coalescing all the candidates around that issue and leading the charge. Steve Del Judas, who had gone from being the city's mayor to being the Prince George's County Council, finally, after more than a decade, overcame the resistance of the Prince George's County Council for losing this piece of a tax space and got his colleagues on the Prince George's Council to agree to let go of Tacoma Park. The county executive, who was Paris Glenn Denning, never really came around supporting us, but since he was looking for election to another office at the time, he sort of let go of his opposition at least. And there were a number of people who worked very hard on it, all of our legislators at the time also worked extremely hard on it. And we've already recognized a number of city staff who also worked on it. So really, there were, there was a huge citizen effort. I remember Ed Sharp and Tom Gagliardo, who hadn't always been on the same side of every political issue, joined together and co-chaired the One Tacoma Citizens Movement. So it was really an effort around which the city came together and pushed on. So it was really an enormous effort, and I have said to people occasionally, when people say, "Oh, you can't do this, you can't do that," I said, "Well, that's what they said about unification, and it took us a while, but we did it." So I think credit goes to the community of Tacoma Park for believing in itself that we could get something like that done, and that we did accomplish it. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I'm looking at Bev and wondering if she has any words of wisdom she'd like to share with us, or any, even any memories she'd like to share with us about the unification effort. And note the T-shirt. Bev may be the only person who has hers and can remember where she put it.
However, I noticed that it still has the line through. Yeah, I never did use the whiteout and try to, we talked about doing it at one point, but Bev Habada, former city manager of People's Republic of Tacoma Park. And we proved that during the 1994 session. It was an amazing time, and I keep thinking that it really should, someone should write a book, take all the stuff out of the basement and work through all the documents. It's a good job for somebody from history of Tacoma to do, to sit down and really, really write the history, because it's, a lot of us don't remember the early days with Sammy Abbott. We remember just the fight from 1994 and what we had to go through to get it through. And all of the messages, the back channeling that went back and forth with even our own legislators in District 21 who were representing us still at that time on the Prince George's side. And the messages that we got back that, well, maybe they were wavering and weren't really supporting, and then we had to pounce on them, and then they would call City Hall and yell and say, "Why, why are you sending all these people to call this?" And we had to tell them, "Because we heard that you're not with us." And, you know, so a lot of, a lot of staying on task that went into that. And I think the message for, I think, everybody in that is just what you can accomplish depends on how much effort and how much attention to detail and all that, that anything is possible if you think that it is something that's worthwhile doing. And Suzanne, listening to the recitation of all those groups, I can, I can now sympathize with the position that you were in in terms of being, having that whole thing laid on, the group that worked on, all those teams to try to coordinate everything. Because it was, it's amazing. I had forgotten about the pregnant women.
It's good to forget about it. Luckily, it's been kind of surprising picking this back up.
Yeah, it's, it was an interesting experience. It was so funny because a couple of months ago, I had someone in Riderwood, and they're split, they have a county line split problem, who, one of the senior citizens asked me about the Tacoma Park experience. And I said, "Oh, no, don't, don't ask me for advice on how to do that." And that was a 13-year process, or more. So, my goodness, you know, there are people probably in this community that hang out a shingle and tell people who are divided in certain communities how to do it, but I'm not one of those who'd want to sign on and do that again. It was an amazing process, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime process only. I can tell you. It's good that you have this event, the 10-year anniversary. I'd forgotten it. Man, time flies so fast, doesn't it? Yeah, well, congratulations. The city's still standing, and we're all in one piece.
That's right. Thank you.
And Bev, if I can just point out to you that I had a very similar experience with inquiries from Riderwood since my parents moved there, and their front door is in Montgomery County and their apartment is in Prince George's County.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. It's hard to believe it's been 10 years. And last week, when I saw that on my email, and actually I am reading my email now, I was amazed it's been that long. But you said it very well, in 1993, there was a race for mayor between Ed Sharp and Connie Clayton. And being Connie Clayton's campaign manager and friends with Mr. Sharp put me in an interesting position. But what impressed me the most is after that campaign, which was very fought, very vigorously, shall we say, everybody came together. And the first meeting of the One Tacoma, I believe, was in January or even maybe December of '93. There were 30 people in that room. And then we started the process over again and began to unify and lobby and whatnot. So it was a very hard and vigorous campaign again. And what impressed me is the way everybody came together to form one group and sort of to accomplish that one purpose of unifying Tacoma Park. So it took a lot of work, but
Here we are.
Here we are, yeah. So anyway, this is as brief as ever been? Done?
I just have two very different kinds of comments to make. One is, my main memory was the time we all locked hands across the border. There's something very exciting about it. I think we all wore the same T-shirt that Bev's now wearing, although it also comes in purple. But it was, there was something very dramatic about it, and that was something very typical of Sammy Abbott, that not only did he have the vision to have that kind of a goal, which so many of us thought was, you know, really beyond realism, but also he always had the ability of dramatizing any issue in a way, in a way that it really could grab the passions of a community. And I think that was, that's what I learned from Sammy. Second thing I want to say is much more dull, but actually very important, and that is the outcome of being in one county and having ourselves unified, I think, has really been far beyond my expectations. I really think that we have been able to coalesce our unity as a community to have much more of a say within Montgomery County, much, much more than we ever had before. We used to be very easy to write off as tacky park. And now I think we, you know, as we know, both at the county level and the state level, we really have a lot of representation and a lot of ability to be heard and a lot of ability to put ourselves and our issues forward. And it's really way beyond what I had expected. What I had focused on was much more technical things, like the ability to have a police officer in one county instead of having to split their time between two counties, and as the city's lawyer, having to research law twice for every single issue, which, you know, duplicated our efforts all the time. But I think the biggest, and that is all very important and has saved us time and has been much more efficient, but I think the biggest thing is that we really have brought ourselves and our power and our identity together in a way that is much, much, much more effective for us wherever we need to make ourselves known. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Okay, if there's nothing else, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The resolution passes. The next item on the agenda is the resolution commenting on the Gilbert and Wood redevelopment, which is also known as the John Ursula Development.
Good evening. It is becoming John Ursula's plight. It doesn't ever going to happen.
Good evening, councilwoman, mayor, city manager. My name's Alana Plancher, I'm a planner with the city. And the project that is coming before you, has come before you several times before, Gilbert and Wood, which is John Ursula's project, he's here tonight, if you have any questions. And the project is at the corner of Eastern Memorial Avenue. It's a proposed restaurant and retail with small office uses. And very little has changed since you saw it the last time. One of the main changes, or not change, but one of the main updates that I have for you is that the engineer for the project has provided the parking numbers, and I provided a detailed description of the parking numbers in the analysis, potentially, and there's actually very, very sudden update since I was provided that, which is that the total number of required spaces is 143, not 156. And the
What did you say, 143?
143.
You said 158?
The, and the, John, as the applicant, is requesting a waiver of 43% of the total number and providing, proposing to provide 82 spaces. Another issue that had, was of concern before, and I think we did cover it, but I wanted to cover it again because I know that it's a concern of the community with stormwater management. As part of this project, there will be two biofilters and then an attachment from a rebuild of an existing stormwater system so that the stormwater will, all of the stormwater from the paved area will go into the storm drain system as opposed to running off the site, which is what, part of it does currently run off the site into the neighboring yards. So the paved area will be, all the stormwater from that area will be collected, and I believe 20% of it will be filtered through a biofilter. There's also a green roof that will be on top of the Pizza Mover Building, that will be part of this project, that will be installed as part of this project. The project is going before the Planning Board on July 26th. That will also have a public hearing, and staff will be preparing the report, which this resolution is in preparation, is to give to the staff report, to be included in the staff report. The, as you know, there's a memorandum of understanding between the city and the council, which allows us to review these projects and sit in on the project as an agency. And the city also has, I'm not, I don't, I believe it's actually all cities in Maryland, but the city, if the city council were to pass a resolution, the planning board can only vote contrary to that resolution with a supermajority. The, generally, there's been strong support for this project from the community, and generally, people have been very excited to see this project move forward because there will be many transportation improvements. People are interested in seeing a restaurant come to the site, and people have expressed support for the design that has already been approved by Historic Preservation Commission. With regard to parking, the commercial revitalization overlay zone does provide for the planning board to grant a waiver of parking apartments. It's revitalization overlay zone because a lot of our sites are very small and they don't have enough room on site for parking. Or also because Tacoma Park is a walkable community, it's not like many other areas in Montgomery County, and a lot of parking on the site may not be desirable. The other thing is that the amount of build-out that you get from a site may not support, for the amount of, may not support more intensive forms of parking. In evaluating the waiver, we looked at, we looked at other jurisdictions that we would consider walkable and other density build-out, so looking at height and the amount of ground that you can build with, and looked at what those areas in our region would require for parking. We looked at the district, and we also looked at Prince George's County, and compared those to Montgomery County, which we think that the quad does recognize because it does allow for that to waiver. It's just not as specific as other areas. The amount of parking that's proposed by the applicant is in line with western parking in other areas, it's also in line with what the new urbanist movement recommends for parking in walkable areas of this type of density. At the same time, those places have different designs of parking lots, and they have different urban environments, and we think that it's important, if this site is to propose this type of parking, that it also conforms to that type of design. And so we've made several recommendations to, to John Ursiolo regarding how we think his site should respond to, to those design concerns. Um, and some of those, or most of those have been addressed in the resolution. And those include increasing the seating in the area, um, increasing access to bicycle parking, uh, increasing the pedestrian access to the site and across the site, um, uh, increasing facilities for pedestrians, um, and, and upgrading facilities for transit use. Essentially, that concludes what I have to present, and if you have questions...
I'd like to go ahead and move the resolution.
Roger.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you. This is Chris O'Leary. I, uh, thank you for, uh, for this project and all the work that you've put into shaping and reshaping the project to, uh, to meet some of the, the concerns that we've had and that the community's had, and, uh, all your efforts to reach out to the community to, uh, to make sure you understood what the issues were. Um, you know, I, I looked down through all the things that, uh, that you have listed in here, like the, you're addressing the stormwater issues, and it seems like the, the one issue that's left is the parking, and I'm hesitant to say anything about that because it's like, you know, be careful what you ask for, you might get it.
Right.
You know, I, um, you're the one that's gonna suffer from, uh, if the parking isn't adequate, and it's your businesses, you own, you know, the building right along there, and it's your tenants that are gonna suffer the most. It's, uh, contracts you have with those tenants who are parking in that lot now that, that are gonna be an issue for you, so...
Yeah, there will be...
I, I don't feel like I have, uh, have to worry too much about, uh, the parking concern. Uh, if you feel comfortable with it, um, you know, I'll support that, but, uh, you know, I certainly like to see more parking, but I'd like to hear you say that you're comfortable with it.
Well, I, I, you know, you, you, uh, there are times when my lot is empty, and there are, in the evening, for instance, there is plenty of parking zones, thinking from the restaurant standpoint, that, that it is cyclical in, in a sense of the times that are there. Um, uh, but, uh, I will have to probably work with some of the tenants, uh, the, the tenants themselves, that, to try to get some permitting to, that they could park on the side street, you know, in other words, or with, where we're allowed to do that under the, uh, under the, the zone, um, because there will be. I mean, I think it's, you know, I think we're pushing it to the limit, but I think that's really where we need to go if we want to get the project at least built and done. I still have the grass lot, and I hope I can still come back and we can do something with that. I really want to do something with that.
Right.
But, so I've preserved it in its entirety. Um, they, the, we're just building the ramp in the exact location, so the same amount of land is there, and we're being very careful, um, that if we do have to go to that, then we have somewhere to go. So I guess the, the hope that I have is that I think there's enough, but if there isn't down the road, then we can address it.
We have a backup plan.
We have a backup plan, basically. We have a lot that is sitting there to, to be done, and, uh, it's a matter of how we go about trying to make that beneficial so that everyone, in a sense, shares equally. I guess that's my concern. I don't want to be the only one providing parking in all of downtown Tacoma, which is kind of what I'm doing now, uh, 'cause really nobody else has any lot except for Kirkroy's little lot, and that's pretty much filled with his tenants and not so much customers. So from a customer standpoint, plus I also bought the shampoo building, I think most of you know, and they had no parking, basically have three, two spaces in the back, so they're using my lot legitimately, 'cause it's my lot, right? To, to do that, so, so now, uh, we're, we're getting more and more people using that lot. And so my concern is, is that, yeah, at some point, we could, uh, run out of, I mean, it could be overcrowded, or someone have to wait a lot, a lot longer than...
You're already overcrowded.
Yeah.
The question is, the question is, is this mix gonna work okay?
Yeah.
Your businesses, right?
I, I think what this does is, is a couple of things, is my lot, part of my problem of maneuvering in my lot is that you have to go in and out the same direction. And I think with the ramp going down, the circulation and everything, that, that you won't have the congestion in the lot. Um, and, um, and I think that's gonna make a tremendous difference. Um, and, um, you know, the merchants, but the merchants will have to help work on this too, because they gotta make a decision as well. So, we're parking for a customer, or do I want to park for my own car? I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
Right.
And they have to make that decision as well. So the lot, the spaces will be available to everybody to use. I am a little concerned about one of the items on the resolution, which, which is asking me to open up the, the gates between what is now what used to be Talleyana's or, or Levin property. Um, and I've told the staff that I'm very concerned about that because what it's gonna really do right now is just add more people from their, not using their lower lot, which they are doing now. By opening that, they're gonna just overcrowd my upper lot. So my concern, I had said what I would like to do is put a gate in there, which we could open, let's say during the Christmas season, when there are times, or there's times when there's a lot of activity. And that would, that could benefit, but I didn't want to open it permanently for that same reason until we decide how these numbers are gonna play out. So that was a little bit of a concern. It's on the staff in your resolution that I'd, I'd like to at least, um, make, I mean, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it being open all the time for just what you're asking.
Alana, do you have any comments on that?
Um, well, we see it, we see that usually in walkable areas, connections between parking lots enables all people who park there to have better access to shorter distances to walk, to travel, to get to where they want to go. And, and we think that an opening at that location could improve the ability of the Talleyana space to rent, because anyone who parks in the rear lot can then walk straight through to the street as opposed to having to go all the way back down West Morland and up the steep hill. Um, we also see it as a good way for the neighborhood to avoid going on the West Morland. If, if they're going to the post office, it's a good shortcut across both lots, um, through that area, but that by creating an opening between the two lots, you also allow, we don't, but right now, that those prop, adjacent property is somewhere around thirty, it's somewhere around between sixty and thirty percent leased. So there are a lot of vacancies in the adjacent property. There aren't that many people using it, and I don't, I don't think it should go both ways in terms of parking, but I think it, it does go both ways, and you want the lots... If we're concerned about people parking on one lot and instead of the other, then there should be enforcement. If we're concerned about providing flexibilities for customers to access different parts of Old Town, then we should open that up. But I'm, I'm, that would be our recommendation. I'm not sure if I made myself perfectly clear there, but...
But your recommendation is to have the gate open?
Right.
And that if, uh, parking becomes an issue, that we look at enforcement rather than putting the gate back in?
I think in terms of pedestrian access, having more options for pedestrians to get to where they want to go is better than having fewer options. And that, I don't think it's fair to expect, um, the adjacent lot to provide parking during the Christmas season for Old Town, but not to benefit from having the ability to get to, to Old Town at other times. And part of the commercial revitalization overlay zone's goals is to promote revitalization as well as the pedestrian and transit access. So I think that an opening between the two lots, and I realize that it does create some hardships in terms of, you, you do need to make sure that it's not being abused, but that the connection between the two would significantly enhance access to Laurel Avenue.
And, and, and right now, Ursiolo property would probably benefit because the other lot is less utilized?
It's currently very much less utilized.
Uh, I, I'll just say that, uh, I understand your concern, but I, I have to go with my planner.
And my thought on that is, uh, it can work both ways if, I would think if there's an, uh, you know, you, you don't have enough spaces in your upper lot. If that's open, somebody has the option of going down to the lower lot and still accessing your businesses.
Well, firstly, there's seventy-one spaces out of the street in meters, so that's a substantial number now that we've increased from...
That's a, that's a very...
That's a substantial increase on what we had, uh, a couple of years ago, in terms of, uh, of all the meters that we do have going. So that's a, that I think is, uh, is, makes it so the other businesses are benefiting outside of mine. But, but I, I still, I mean, I still disagree, and I, I don't think you're gonna, you know, you're thinking that it's for the overflow, for me, it would go down, but I really think it's gonna be the reverse, is that people are not gonna park in the lower lot, and parking mine is gonna jam it up even more. Uh, during holiday seasons, I don't think that's a problem, 'cause people just want to get in and get out, and, and maybe it could work. And if it works well, then we could continue. We have the option, if it's a gate, to do whatever we want. But to open it permanently is, I think, is overly burdensome. So I've gone to every extreme to try to make pedestrian safety obviously better, uh, not only with the benches and the corridor and, and, and just so that all of the, I mean, bike racks and everything else that we put in. So I just think that, that I've gone as far as I can go, and, and, um, and I just think to do that is actually putting an additional burden on me, 'cause I don't think it's gonna work in the reverse that mu, in the sa, as well as everyone thinks it might.
So the, our resolution says that a pedestrian connection of gate and steps or ramp is constructed. What's currently there is fence?
There's no gate.
Right. You can't go through now.
You can't.
And, and so our resolution includes a gate. And...
I don't have a problem with putting the gate.
Right.
But I think the gate could go, 'cause I think down the road, you know, depending on how we work all things out, at some point, it might be the thing to do. But right now, I think all it's doing is burdening me, because I don't think it's gonna work the way Alana thinks it's gonna work. I mean, in essence, if my lot is full and you spill down below, it sounds right, but it wouldn't happen that way.
But with, with this language, it, it recommends putting in steps or ramp and the gate, and, and, and the, and the gate would be under the control of...
That remains open.
Is the, the gate remain open?
Yeah, this is say it's open during normal business hours.
Right.
And, and I would just like to restrict that, to say that we would open it at times when we, it was the Christmas season, for instance, or any other times that we think if they're having a big sale or whatever, if the whole town, I mean, with the, um, the Business Association, they're starting to do joint sales together and things like that, um, uh, that it would, that, that it could happen that way. Um, we would even open the gate on, on, um, the, um, street festival and things like that, so people could park, walk through the lot, come up. I mean, that's, that would be fine, too, as well.
I guess, um, I'm not... I, I, I'd, I'd like having some flexibility on the control on the gate. And, and what I kind of fall back on is, um, that it would seem that, that, that control on that should probably rest with you, 'cause it's your lot.
If, if, yeah, if, if I think it's, oh, if they're abusing it, and I have no other way to control it, remember we talked about one time, you know, I can't give out a ticket, I can't tow somebody.
Right.
And if I do tow somebody, all I've done is irritate a customer.
Right.
And I just don't think that's the thing to do. I've never believed in towing unless somebody's just really waiting in a fire lane or something. So, so I guess, yeah, I'm asking that, you know, over the years, I've done everything I could to be, um, tuned to whatever the neighborhood wants, but I think this is just asking me to do too much, um, at this point, without some control that I could at least close it. I don't mind putting the gate, and I will put the gate and do it.
Well...
At least I have some control to say, they're abusing it, let's close it.
Let, let, let me suggest that perhaps what we can do is leave it either open or closed for a temporary period of time, and then maybe, um...
And try something.
Require, yeah, and take a look and see what happens. Um, and, and I don't have, I don't have a strong feeling, but, um, I think leaving, I think having the gate and steps or ramp is a good idea, putting that in there.
That's...
And then, um, do it, do it, I mean, I'm not sure what you would learn by keeping the gate closed, 'cause you don't know what would have happened if the gate was open. So maybe it's open for a short period of time, and then you, you revisit the issue. I'm not sure it needs to come back to the council.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, I would feel okay with doing that on some limited basis, and a test to try things and see how, if, but if I felt it was abusive, if I had the control to at least say they're abusing it, until we can come up with another resolution, I could come to the council and explain, certainly come and explain what is happening, you know, and, and try. But again, I just think at some point, if we keep irritating customers, you know, I don't think that's a good thing either.
Right.
You need everyone, you get every customer you can get, so, uh...
Yeah, I, I'd like to get through this, and Cully has had her hand...
And I just had two quick things to add, just to say that, uh, I'm happy with the, addressing the stormwater issues that I know that Waco has always been concerned about. Um, I think a real benefit of this is the improved vehicle circulation. And Alana, I think you said about the supermajority that all of the municipalities have it. I believe that's not the case. I think we're, we're maybe the only one who does.
I'm not sure.
I'm pretty sure that we're the only one.
Okay, Cully.
Why would somebody park in your lot and then lock down to the lower lot? What can they get through from the lower lot? I don't go back there.
Okay.
When I cheat parking, I, I cheat and park behind marks and go...
There's a back entrance to... There's a back entrance to that building in the back.
And that's what, the Curbs and the...
The Curbs and, and, and all the other offices and everything that are in there. And, and theoretically, a back entrance could be to, to Talleyana's as well.
I see.
It doesn't have that right now, but it can be reopened. Um, they had it at one time. So basically, they were just parking the upper lot to walk in and not go to the lower lot, and that's my concern. It won't go where it's supposed to go.
I understand.
And in an overfill, do the reverse. They'll do the reverse for me, but it won't happen. The other way, very rarely.
It's hard to predict, I think.
Yeah, it really is.
Where the benefit, or if it would be a wash. The other question I have is, um, what, what does the, the city or what do you plan to do? How are you gonna do the customer-only parking, uh, enforcement and limits? And do you, is there any mechanism set up by the county, say, to encourage employees not to bring their cars to work? Is there any incentive programs that you know of? Is, is the county engaged in anything to encourage employees, especially in areas where there's not a lot of parking, not to, to park through the Metro Tech system or anything like that?
Uh, the, the county has a commuter program, and they'll work with employers to provide, I'm not sure exactly how it works, but they do provide benefits to employers, and I think they sort of wean them off the benefits in order to provide Metro Tech or other alternative transit-oriented types of, of transportation options. And there's also a commuter program, which will provide lives to people who are either carpooling or otherwise, um, using alternative transportation so that I think they get four times a year where they can call and get a taxi ride home, and say the ride doesn't work out, or they have an emergency and they have to go home in the middle of the day, where the county will, where this program will pay for someone to use that service and, and go home.
And how are we gonna police it? So you're gonna, you're gonna have to police it, right?
I would...
Like you're gonna put in, uh, meters or hire someone to stand on the roof?
No, I mean, I, I mean, that was a problem. I wish I could just put in meters and police that, but I have no way to ticket anybody other than to tell them, and, uh, if, if they don't pay the meter. So it would have to be a gate system at some point.
So Section Five is really enforceable?
Section Five is enforceable, and there are several different ways. We've talked about it. One of the ways that we've talked about it is to limit the area to four-hour parking or five-hour parking, because those...
Do you enforce that?
John would be responsible for enforcing that. At the moment, one half the lot is reserved for, for, um, for people who leave the lot. So that the actual people who work in offices or work in the shops or work in the restaurants have, most of the spaces on that lot are reserved for their use.
I just...
And, and I, in looking at the number of the spaces that are there versus the numbers that are proposed, there's not that much difference, which would lead one to suspect that should the lot... that should the lot, should the uses on the lot be expanded without any expansion of parking options, there may not act, there may actually be a real problem. So if you don't limit the lot to customer use only, there may be, you know, several times a week, several days for a long period where there are real problems. So if you set up under mixed use, under, using the reduction which the applicant is eligible for through the zoning code for miss a shared use lot, it actually unfortunately doesn't hit that many benefits, but it does reduce the required amount by 11. Of course, you cannot reserve any of the spaces for employees.
So those folks are gonna be pushed out into the neighborhood. Is there permit parking in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes. And the permit, the permit parking in the neighborhood, each of the businesses are eligible to request a certain number of permits for their employees. And it's at the, so they, and they can't go into neighborhoods, according to the permit law, they cannot go into neighborhoods that are already overcrowded so that they would be received permit parking for neighborhoods that still have capacity.
Couple of things just to broaden our perspective. We will see an immediate improvement, I believe, Alana, correct me if I'm wrong, in the circulation because of the change to the ingress and the egress. And, and not having employee spaces there in that lot will also be an immediate improvement. The gate, the ramp, all of that represents, in my mind, something that people have been asking for, which is improved circulation and connectivity. And I think that, you know, we can see how that works out as well. There are many things to like about this development and I'm, I'm happy to support it. I think the, the fact that it enhances the commercial options in that area as well as dealing with the stormwater problems. And those are very beneficial to the city and our residents. The fact that also there's room to grow the parking if we need to is, is something that we need to keep our eye on and, and make sure this comes back to us before we do see, you know, intensive problems. But I'm happy to support this in its current form and I think that it is a very good project and should move forward. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments?
I would suggest to the council that we amend the first section of the resolution so that at the end of it, this says for a trial period of, and tell, tell me what you would suggest. And then have it come back to the council following that trial period with a recommendation from the staff as well as a recommendation from Mr. Ursiolo.
Doesn't that have to be constructed first before it can be?
Right.
A trial period?
Right.
It would be very difficult for us to come up with a date right now.
Yeah, I'm saying a trial period of X number of months from the time that it goes into place.
And, and at what point do you judge that it's gone into place?
When construction is completed.
UNO. When the UNO is signed and stamped.
Is that, is that a workable, is that a workable option? It's twice. What, what, what do you?
No, a trial, a trial of.
But did, did the two of you have a suggestion? Or either of you have a suggestion? How about that?
Well, maybe theirs.
Yeah, but we're now talking about a trial period, which is something different.
One year.
One year?
Yeah, they gotta work.
Okay. So a period of one year from, and what would the start date be?
Grand opening of the Red Book.
Issuements of the Use and Occupancy.
Going, and it'll be important that the lot is appropriately signed so that people know who's supposed to park there and who's not.
Well, sign is, yeah, that would be the sign.
Okay, so the, so the point that the signs go up?
Well, you could, you wanna know that you're getting the usage and that means that the restaurant's open, right? That's the, that's the key to this whole thing.
Let's, let's do, let's do the UNO because, you know, and let's assume that you'll get the signs in about that time. How does that sound? So for a trial period of one year, and that means that the gate stays open, one year from the, from the issuance of the UNO, how about that? For a trial period of one year from the issuance, issuance of the UNO, Use and Occupancy Permit, UNO Permit. How does that sound?
And actually, it's gonna be to your benefit, Mr. Ursiolo, to have the, the building fully occupied at that point because you wanna show that the parking, you're getting the open. Yeah, of course, yeah. That part, yeah. No, I, you know, obviously, I, I wanna get the benefit.
Can I just ask?
Yes, we have.
Can I just ask if the, the changes to the ingress and egress will be made and the signage will be made so that it's all customer parking prior to the UNO?
Actually, I, some of the part, the signage will be in place probably as soon as we get the lot, once the ramp is built. And the building may be still be under construction, the building itself. Because the ramp is supposed to be built first.
All right.
And so it's conceivable signage and things to start directing people. Because we're trying to get the parking lot as squared away as much as possible while the building is being built so we don't disturb it. So I guess the answer is that if you would, some of that would be in place before the building's finished.
Okay. Sooner the better.
Okay. So what, what we have, and I assume that the maker and the seconded have agreed to it, that the Section 1 at the end of what's currently there. Yep? What did you say?
Aren't you making a, aren't you proposing an amendment?
No, I thought you said you could agree with that.
I don't know how my council colleagues feel, though.
Well, the suggestion that I'm making is that we do it for a trial period. I'd be happy to read the language. And if we wanna do it as a formal amendment, we can do that. Or we can, if the council. All right, okay. All right.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
We just have a suggestion for the amendment.
Okay.
Recommendation. Issuance of the Use and Occupancy Permit and completion of the site plan improvements.
Completion of.
Can you take the back of the microphone?
Right. The recommendation is to add, after the issuance of the Use and Occupancy Permit, Use and Occupancy Permit and completion of site plan improvements.
Completion of site plan improvements? How do you decide when the site plan improvements are completed?
Here it goes, and then session by GPS.
Okay. All right. Who would like to move the amendment?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'm going to, before we vote on the amendment, I'm gonna go to public comment. Are there any public comments on this proposal, including the amendment?
Good evening again. My name is Jim DiLuigi. I live at 7106 13th Avenue and have a business property at 6 Grant Avenue. I walk frequently downtown to Old Tacoma, but when I go on weekends, I drive because of proximity. So I can tell you for certain that there are numerous times when there is a substantial amount of parking not available in this particular lot. I do applaud Mr. Ursiolo's efforts. He's been diligent in trying to get this project moving ahead and I certainly support the project. I do have concerns about parking and I'm not sure they're all his, should be all his responsibility. I think the city has something to weigh in here. But first of all, if you look at the plan, you'll see there are only two accessible parking spaces. To me, that can only mean one thing because you need one for every 25 or fraction thereof. So there are 86. You need four. In order to have two, that would mean you'd only have 50 public parking spaces and the rest would be dedicated to tenants. I think that that would be incorrect here. I think there would be a shortfall of public parking based upon the intent here. In my opinion, tenant parking should be limited and it should probably be limited to just those spaces that back onto the stores along Laurel. I think that should be part of your suggestion to the county. And I actually think it should be a requirement as opposed to the commentary that I read where it says Mr. Ursiolo's been asked to limit it, to limit the parking attendancy. I think that's a shortfall there and allows too much flexibility. Circulation of trucks in this area is gonna be difficult at best. And I think what's gonna wind up happening, if you have food delivery trucks, which are fairly large, coming to this restaurant, they're not gonna be able to maneuver in this parking lot. The turning radiuses are too tight. So what's gonna happen is they're gonna park on that ramp that's an exit ramp. Right now, there's parking spaces, six of the parking spaces are shown on that ramp. So we're gonna wind up having blockages there. I think that's a problem that needs to be addressed and probably best be addressed by actually taking away some of the parking spaces to allow more turning space that that loading got. There are no provisions shown here for garbage removal. So if there's gonna be a compactor, something of that nature here to, you know, address removal of garbage and removal of trash, then that's gonna need to have enough space for a fairly large vehicle to maneuver as well. And many of you have seen how the city trash truck works. You know how big it is and you know how much space it takes to maneuver and to pick up a dumpster and to take it out of there. Maneuvering of cars, I think, is quite difficult also because a lot of the spaces are now 90-degree turns instead of the angled parking, which is much easier to maneuver in. There are service doors now that will be blocked at the stores by the parking spaces shown. That's why I think those spaces should be dedicated to tenants, so that tenants can move their cars when they need to to get things in and out. And that those are the only spaces that are allowed for tenant parking so that the rest can be used for public. Lastly, and probably more importantly, is that the city needs to look at parking on a bigger scale. If you consider the fact that this reduction in parking is predicated upon a dense community and people walking, you have to ask yourself, well, why is the development at the Tacoma Metro envisioning two-car parking garages? You know, what's actually going on here? You have, I think you have to look at Silver Spring and how much parking has been provided there and how much is used. I think you have to consider that we have a farmer's market. We're gonna have a farmer's market that takes up the parking on the street. At the same time, we're gonna probably have a restaurant that's gonna be offering brunch and is gonna be trying to attract people from all over the place to come to this, to their restaurant. So I, I think the illusion of reduced parking based on people walking is simply that, it's an illusion. At certain times, it's just not gonna work. So I think the city should be looking at providing a parking garage somewhere in this area. For example, the lot across from the Bank of America would be an ideal location which could service all the facilities in this area and could have a commercial development at the ground level. I don't, I don't think this solution that's proposed here is gonna work in terms of parking, but I don't think it's Mr. Ursiolo's problem in the long run. I think it's all our problems and I think the city should plan to do something about it.
Thank you. I wonder if you, I think, I think, I think Jim made a good point, several good points, actually. And I'm wondering how we can incorporate some of those considerations. I don't, it seems to me that there may very well need to be some more discussion of some of these things. Alana, well, do we have any, any way of sort of dealing with that in the way, in the, what's up there now? Or do you think it needs more work?
I think, I, there were some other items on the site plan where I did wanna have early discussions with John just about placement and location and some of the proposed materials. I know that the arbros is still looking at some of the issues with the trees, just what, for example, species and how, how they're located on the site. So we will be meeting again with parking planning. And we can, and I think certainly in PDA spaces, I looked at the turning radius and I've had questions about that also. And, and in talking about it, I'm thinking, all right, you know, what are the size of the parking spaces because being a right angle, but those, those are things that should be looked at. And so I, those, we can certainly bring them back to you or if you'd like an update, I can provide you with an update regarding how they're resolved or, or if there are issues where maybe we would need to revise the resolution. We cover that. The resolution, essentially, you can make any resolution up until the time of the planning board hearing.
Mm-hmm.
The staff report needs to go to the planning board three weeks, more or less, prior review.
Okay. If, if we can include those, those issues in your further discussions, I think that would be a good thing. In, in terms of the issue of the city's responsibilities for parking, I would agree with you about that. I do think, you know, the city has made some efforts. We had an earlier effort to work with Mr. Ursiolo on a parking garage that didn't work out. But I was very much in support of that and I do think that we need to continue to work on parking in Old Town because I, I think it's probably one of the biggest hurdles to sort of the economic thriving of that area. And I, I'd like to see the council continue to work on that. But for the short term, I think that this is gonna probably, if we, if we can provide those spaces for customers, I think it will help. And I appreciate it, Jim. Thanks. Anyone else? Okay. The issue is before the council and it's in, it will be in two parts. The first part is the council will vote on the amendment which would add to Section 1 for a trial period of one year from the issuance of the UNO permit and completion of the site plan improvements. Does someone wanna move the amendment? Thank you. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Amendment passes. Okay. What's in front of the council right now is the resolution with the amendment attached to it. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
The resolution passes as amended. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it sounds like we will be hearing from you with at least an update at some point in the not too distant future. Thank you. The next item is the resolution regarding the purchase of the three Aspen Court properties by the Montgomery County Housing Opportunities Commission.
The council has reported this evening a resolution which was presented during the work stuff, excuse me, the work session the other day. I've also included in your agenda packet a, a letter that we've forwarded to HOC in support of the project, given the timing of when they needed some indication of whether or not the council would support their purchase of the property on Aspen Court. And with the council's absence last week, we drafted the letter and sent that out as sort of a stopgap measure, if you will. There have been no changes in the project. The HOC is still looking at the feasibility of maintaining the property as rental after its significant renovation and is also looking at the possibility of converting it over into workforce condominium or housing opportunities.
Okay.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments on the resolution? We've talked about this, yeah. And I think you weren't here, so.
I wasn't, but I went back and saw it on Granica's streaming video. It's very exciting. There's nothing in the resolution that says that it's limited to rental or to sale, correct?
No.
Yeah, I, I think this is great. I know that, I talked with the gentleman while I was in North Carolina and he expressed that the, if it was financially feasible, they'd like to keep it as, as rental housing and are looking at a broad range in terms of income levels, which I think is great for the area. It does sound like financially, it's, it's gonna make more sense for it to be a for-sale property. But their first priority is rental and, and they'll, they'll do it if they can, I think is the impression that I got. And I have a lot of faith in, in that, so I'm really happy about this.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Are there any public comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none, the resolution's before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The resolution passes.
Thank you.
The next item is the second reading of the ordinance, which amends the code regarding the Board of Elections to revise the minimum number of members for the Board. We talked about this at the first reading. This would simply change the number to, it looks like it's actually, shall be composed of up to seven members. I thought we hit, I thought the way we left it.
Mayor, if I may, the city clerk had asked if I would address this. When this matter was last discussed by the council, as it was originally presented, it said at least three, but not more than seven. And Councilmember Austin Lane had suggested that it might be more appropriate to use some different language. The city clerk subsequently did follow up, I believe with the city attorney's office, and the ordinance that was before you for second reading actually does reflect some language changes. I would read now that the Board of Elections shall be composed of up to seven members who shall be appointed by the council rather than providing the at least three, but not more than seven. And the city clerk had indicated that she felt that Councilmember Austin Lane's suggestion was a good one and would be more appropriate. So she did make that change in the draft that was before you this evening.
Okay. What is before us is the recommendation of the city clerk. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
Yes, okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any council comments? Here.
I want to make sure I understand this change. So that means that a Board of Elections of one person would be okay?
That seems a little odd to me, too, but I, I'm willing to go with the recommendation of the city clerk. Maybe we can ask for some comment by the clerk, whether she thinks that a committee of one would be workable, and if not, whether that would require any languages, any language changes. Okay. The line, the ordinance has been moved and seconded. Are there any other council comments? Any public comments? Since this is the second reading of the ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance, the ordinance passes its second reading. The final item on our special session agenda is the consent agenda. It consists of two items, a resolution that makes an appointment to the Health Services Impact Committee, and a resolution that appoints a city representative to the Montgomery County Cable Communications Advisory Committee. Does someone want to move the consent agenda?
So move.
I have a question before we do that, since there's no discussion of the consent agenda.
Right.
Can you tell me where things stand with the appointments to the Montgomery College Neighbors Committee, please?
I haven't scheduled that yet. I will schedule that at some point in the future.
I will now move, move the resolution.
Okay, move the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Okay, and somebody to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. The consent agenda is not up for discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. The consent agenda passes. The council will take a short break and come back for our two work session items.
No, we are.
Welcome.
Hi.
We have your written report that the council has had a chance to look at, as well as the attachments and a couple of additional attachments that were provided this evening. Why don't you go ahead and present this in any way you'd like?
Well, the report basically speaks for itself. I won't read through the various pages, but we, you know, it was remarkable that in our work, we elected not to have a chair, co-chair, and we did everything by consensus. In our notes, we indicated that we ourselves heard a lot about you all, your work, the way you work, had a perspective on the city with respect to comparable Maryland cities, and really have a very high regard for all of you and for the work that you do. Our survey, such as it was, and it's included, I think, as an appendix, but not here in the report itself, also indicates that most folks in the city don't have much of a clue as to the time and the work and what's involved with your jobs. On the notes on the council on page three, it's one, two, three, four, three, well, I guess the last one should be five. A little typo there. We felt that the compensation that you all get really is nominal, nominal, rather than for the true time that is put into your tasks. And there were some mixed thoughts on our committee about what this represented and whether, how high a recommendation we should make. One thought is that, both with the benefit of greater understanding among the people of the city, but also a reflection on the system, does the council itself want to continue paying the future councils on the basis of something that is effectively nominal? Or does it make sense for Tacoma Park to rethink and make the pay more in line with the work, the time that you actually put in? On the recommendations page, page four, we were struck particularly that the area of health insurance may be a fruitful area for you to consider exploring changes to make this a greater economic benefit for those people on the council who might need that. Our recommendations for the salary is that every four years is a long time to wait. Most workers on most jobs don't have to wait that long. And we were all in agreement that the council would do well to have an immediate raise effective this November of 25% for the mayor and for the council. We were of divided opinion, the majority, four to one, thought in subsequent years it should go up by 10% a year. One person, myself, thought 5% might make more sense in the current system. We were all in agreement that the city and the council would benefit from greater diversity in terms of who was on the council, reflecting the population of the city. And the, given the time that is involved in serving as a member of the council or as mayor, for some people who are lower income, this is a formidable obstacle, really, that some people just can't afford to change their lives and serve on the council and still make it economically. This was something that was touched upon as a recommendation four years ago by the previous committee, and we again urge you to explore this in order to see if this is a factor that could be addressed in a way to improve the diversity on the council. The last two recommendations are recognizing that there are some conferences and courses for professional development for all of you may not be covered under existing authorities. And it is worth, in order to get the best, most educated, able members on the council and once people get elected, that the city, that the council fund professional development courses. And the last recommendation has to do with PDAs, increase of emails. And there was a sense among us that it's worth, you're considering establishing some sort of tracking system to see about how this affects workload, whether it ameliorates it, whether the PDAs or other equipment might in fact be increasing the time that you're all putting in, and consider this as a factor for future compensation. Anything major that we left out here?
The only thing I'd like to emphasize or underline is the fact that the word compensation, we are very difficult to try dealing with, the composition assumes equality for input. So, but at the end, we realize that you're motivated by high values and all the members of the committee highly appreciate that effort. And the practice has inspired us, it's a very good vibrancy of the community. So I just want to say, we recognize that and we appreciate. So this is the token of our appreciation within the limits.
We also thank you for the work that you did in taking as complete a look at this issue as you did. And I know you spent a lot of time thinking about it. And clearly, the questions that you asked the members of the council who met with you represented, you know, a lot of thought and familiarity with the complexity of this issue. So that's appreciated also. Any questions for the council of the committee on their recommendations? Carrie?
I don't really have any questions, but as a member of the previous council compensation committee, I want to reiterate what Mayor Porter said, and thank you for all the work you put into this. I realize how difficult it is. It sounds kind of like an easy pass when you volunteer for the committee and you get in and realize the breadth of the issue. There's a whole lot to understand, and just looking at other communities doesn't answer the question because there are no two communities that are really the same. We have different things that we need to consider and look at in Tacoma Park, and I appreciate all the time you put in and the consideration you gave today.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know that with the addition now of a second very structured process for looking at council compensation, we are one step farther down the road in terms of making this some, well, in making it a sensible salary for what the council members do. And I know that when we took this up four years ago, well, I guess we took it up six years ago, and then we decided to establish the committee. And then that committee developed the framework. And from there, you all had something to work with. Well, I see and hear much that we can work with now as we make a decision, as well as in four years when this issue is reviewed, it can provide the basis for which the next committee makes that decision. The part where you talk about a way of adjusting the salary in between the four-year review is very interesting. And I am glad that you reviewed some of the additional options that are available, like health insurance and PDAs and things like that. The 10%, I'm assuming is how, I didn't get my calculator out, but that's how you came up with such odd numbers in the four years ago. But anyway, thank you very much for your review of this issue and for your recommendations.
I'd like to follow up with one additional question. And it goes to the issue of the 5% versus the 10%. The, in the context in which I ask this question is that there has been a lot of discussion on the council about how city employees' compensation is updated from year to year. And the council's sort of gone with a market, a market-based increase. But the increases have been something in the neighborhood of 3% a year, is my recollection. And I guess the only qualm that I have is a situation in which elected officials are agreeing to an increase in their own compensation of 10% a year while having their employees have a compensation increase, which isn't tied to a specific number, but has been more in the neighborhood of 3%. And I wonder if you, if you, that was an issue that you all talked about, and so where you came out on that?
Do you want to start? Well, one of the things we discussed is whether this is a cost of living increase. And when we talked about what compensation actually was, this money does not represent being compensated for a number of work hours or a number, like an employee would be compensated. So when we thought about it in those terms, we kind of stepped away from a cost of living increase or some kind of increase related to inflation or whatever is related to economic conditions, and just suggested that we were kind of keeping up with other communities and other. So it's not a salary or cost of living adjustment. And that's, and we talked about that because I know you had talked about the 5%.
So the 10% was based in your assessment of what other communities are doing in terms of increases for their elected officials?
Not so much, not really. Just, again, the premise that we were operating on is that you were not being, getting an hourly wage or a true salary reflective of the work that you do. If it were, I think that the calculations would be very different. And perhaps if it were commensurate, then 3% or whatever is reflective for other city workers and what are prevailing cost of living would be appropriate.
It almost seems like a phase in. You give an initial jump and then 10% each year to try and phase in that increase to where I think it might need to be.
Right. It could be that the next compensation committee meets and says, oh, it stays where it is. We were kind of trying to say this is where it should be, not waiting for that four-year period, just kind of moving forward in that direction.
One committee member said, let's pay the mayor $20,000. And really, if we were to move in that direction, it should be in recognition for real work, real labor, real time, and real pay for all that, rather than basically just a, I don't want to use the word token. What's the common noun, what's the common word for it?
Well, it's like a stipend, we talked about it, like a stipend or offsetting any costs that you incur because of, you know, daycare or whatever else that you may incur doing this particular position.
Okay. Colleen?
Well, I want to thank you all for all the work that you did. I could tell in the interviews where we went in that you were really giving it a lot of thought and had covered a lot of the issues, you know, that were, that people in the community talked about and that were important to me. And to me, the biggest issue is what's the right amount, what's the balance between the right amount of money to attract people and make it possible for as many people in the community to do the work without, you know, paying so much money that you have people kind of hang on to it or who do the job for the money. And I think about that a lot more. And the questions that you guys asked related to that were really thoughtful and considered. And I appreciate that all of that went into what you came out with there. And I could tell in the process that that was really important to you and what you were reflecting on more than the cost of living issue or a comparison with surrounding jurisdictions. It's nice to compare yourself, just sort of as a reality check for the surrounding jurisdictions. But my impression was that you were trying to come out with a balance that would really address that issue that seemed to be very important to people.
Here comes Susan.
Is this a place for discussion or is it just for questions?
No, I think if everyone had the opportunity to get their questions answered, I think that would be appropriate. So if you have comments, go ahead.
Comment. I have two conflicting views of our compensation, as I guess others have two. One is that I think, in general, I think politicians should be paid a lot of money because I believe that would decrease corruption and would encourage more of them to use their own money for campaigns and similar sorts of things. Of course, that would also mean people would think of it as a high-paying job and apply for it, so it does have that downside. I also think paying, in Tacoma Park, paying a fair amount of money for council positions and mayor would encourage folks who could combine service on the council with a part-time job and actually live on it. Having said that, however, it's hard to imagine a really large jump in the amount of money we get. I just don't see how I can, you know, talk to my constituents. You know, we, I have a lot of renters in my ward. I have landlords who complain to me bitterly about, you know, a 3%, they only can raise rent 3%, you know. Am I going to go to them and say, gee, I just voted for a 10% increase in my salary, but you guys are held to 3%? So I actually think anything over 5% is crazy. I mean, I don't feel comfortable with that, I should say, great. I don't feel comfortable with an increase in our current amount over 5%. And the first year is, it's like 25%, something like that.
It's 25%.
A great big jump.
I think during the last report, I don't remember the numbers exactly, but there was a rather large percentage increase in the last four years as well. Because you are kind of making up for four years with no increase. So when we kind of looked at 10% times 10% times 10% times 10%, we're getting, you know, I don't know the exact number in my head, but we're trying to say that there's going to be like a 25% increase over time. So, I mean, that was kind of our reasoning. There was a big jump the last time in the compensation committee, not because you haven't gotten raised for four years.
So what you're suggesting is kind of a retroactive concept here? That it's been four years since it's been increased?
Right. Well, it's not retroactive because you're not going to get any money. But in a sense that it's trying to catch up with what's going on in the surrounding areas or what could, you know, what has been done in the past. So the last time, there was a big jump. Do you recall the amount?
I don't recall the amount. I remember there was a jump. I think the, as I heard the explanation when you first started out, and if I can put it in terms of what we did with the staff, was we made a market rate adjustment, and then we do the increases each year, which are smaller. And what I have heard you say earlier is basically what you're suggesting is that the market rate you feel for this job is higher. And this isn't any kind of a cost of living increase that you're suggesting at this point in time. It's to bring the remuneration for the work done, not to be at some level hourly, but to be at a higher plane so that maybe more people would participate in the elections and running for office.
Yeah, if you were making a salary of $40,000 or $50,000 or $60,000, 3%, when it comes out to the actual total increase, it would be way more than this 10% here. But since we're starting at such a small sum, the amount of increase, you know, percentage-wise, it looks large. But when you're actually looking at the actual dollar amount, it's not going to be great. And it may not even cover inflation in some cases, depending on what you're using the money for.
And another thing we looked at is, from the first day, I asked myself, we had on page two, we have enumerated the approach that we took in evaluating. But personally, I had asked myself, would I run for an office? I'm a lower resident of Tacoma Park. And at the current compensation rate, you're eliminating a lot of people from participating. So that pay, that pay has to be at the very minimum. The passage is just a mathematical game. But from my perception, any low-income resident of Tacoma Park, if he has a desire to serve, if he has a capability to serve, he should serve. Those $5,000, $6,000 should not be an issue. At least there should be a decent amount of money to offset life costs. Otherwise, only the eldest will be allowed to serve. So that's a very strong point from I am. And when we looked at it on the overall scale, in fact, to even call it compensation is a contract, to me, it's not compensation. It's just an appreciation amount for the amount of work that you guys put into. So I looked at it from that angle. I asked myself, would I run? Yes, I do have a passion, I have the capability, but that number has to be reasonable for me to have a certain job. So from that angle, I personally feel that I really fall for that position. And it should be a reasonable amount of.
Do you think we're at that point? Do you think your recommendation takes it to that point?
At least, not to a point that I would like it, but within the.
But you think it would be reasonable, it wouldn't discourage someone who is interested for running?
At least there's enough there compared to, yeah.
It should be remarked that the last council compensation committee's recommendations that the council adopted four years ago was the first raise in.
Twelve years.
Twelve years, which was, if you take it, it's not very much year by year.
It's about a 50% increase.
I'd just like to make the one point, address something that Councilmember Snipper said. And that is that this council would not be voting for a race for ourselves. It would be for whoever fills these seats after the next election.
However, we know that it tends to be the same person.
Not necessarily if we raise the pay.
There's an orange sheet in the thing over there, which has the history of the council's compensation and shows that there were increases in 2003, 1991, '89, '76, '64. So it is a fair amount of time in between increases, up until the one in 2003, which recommended regular looks at that.
I had thought of the compensation a little bit differently than you did as far as the part-time job. I thought of it in terms of the money that you would need to offset some of the things you might need to get, like a laptop computer, paying for your cell phone bill, childcare, things like cash that you would have to have in hand to serve on the committee that you may not be able to, you know, have. And so when we asked about how much out-of-pocket, we got an average of about $100. It wasn't about $100 a month. And just kind of thinking in terms of really offsetting the expenses, because again, it's not compensation. It's, in my mind, I had thought of it in terms of expenses that you would have to have, no matter whether you were high-income or low-income, to kind of offset.
Is there anybody else who wants to address this? I'd like to make a suggestion to the council. I very much appreciate the recommendations. I'd like to suggest to the council that the recommendations of the committee be incorporated into a resolution for compensation for future councils. But I'd like to also suggest that we follow up on a couple of their other recommendations. There are a couple of things. My understanding is that informally, the city has permitted council members to buy into the city's health insurance program as sort of, at cost. And I think that might be something the council might want to institutionalize to allow the members of the council to buy into the city's health insurance plan. I don't believe it would cost the city anything. And it would certainly be less expensive because it's a group plan than would the individual health insurance.
I think, I personally participate in that right now. And it's costing $1,070 a month for my wife and me for the health insurance.
It's more than you make in your council salary.
It's more than I make in my county's salary, yes.
Well, but the opportunity to purchase health insurance at a group rate, you're probably still saving money. I haven't, I mean, I've, I've, I think this is something we should continue to follow up. I would also suggest that we follow up on the fifth recommendation and the third recommendation. I think the third one, which is looking at making it more possible for low-income residents to afford to serve, may need a little bit more examination. But I certainly think it's worth looking at. Now, under, I think we are already implementing your fourth recommendation, if I'm understanding your fourth recommendation about continue to fund members attendance at conferences and professional development. I think we're sort of doing that already. But I think, I think we should continue, we should implement your second recommendation, which is the salary increase, and then continue to look at the ones, one, three, and five, that are sort of in some stage of development. So that's what I would suggest for the council.
It was our understanding that some professional development courses may not be covered by the city, and that's why we were specific on it.
Okay. Well, maybe we should then include it. But certainly, we can, we can continue to discuss those issues. And I certainly appreciate that thought that you've given them and the recommendations that you've made.
We also want to express our appreciation to Irma and Jessie. They were fabulous in their work. And they made much possible that would not have been possible. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much for your, for your work on this. Yes, I think we should have continued discussion on the other recommendations. But I would like to, the idea about the compensation is that this is something that. I would like to, the, the idea about the compensation is that this is something that should be established far enough ahead of, of the election, so that people who are running for election know what it is that they would be, what they would be receiving. I think that there's some similar, um, need to get some of the other things decided, but I assume that doing the compensation, the monetary compensation, would be an important thing for us to do far in advance of the election. So I do appreciate the, the clear recommendations you've given us. Thank you. We appreciate it. The next item is the discussion of the Health Services Impact Committee. You have an update to give us, and you also wanted to talk about, you also wanted to talk about some of the issues that you've raised, and some of the issues that have been raised in other contexts with the council.
Thank you for inviting us to report back at this meeting, and I think you guys all got a great packet put together by Vinita, which kind of describes what we've done since the committee was established, um, just under a year ago, at the end of July of last year. And we are very pleased that you facilitated us adding one new member to the committee tonight, because that's been one of our ongoing issues, the lack of people on the committee. And as you can see in your packet, we put together a survey, and as you can imagine, working on a committee is sort of like working on the council, and it takes a long time to reach consensus on something like this. And this is a working draft, although we do feel that it is pretty much wrapped up. There's some changes, minor changes to be made. And we are looking to get this survey out to as many people in the Tacoma Park community as possible. We've also run the survey by Jerry Stocks, the head of Washington Adventist, and he's added his comments, and a few questions were changed based on his input. So we're here tonight to see if there's any comments or questions from you all on the content and our plans for distribution of the survey, and additionally, to ask for some financing for the production, and the distribution, and the analysis of the survey in Tacoma Park. We are also considering, and we have spoken with Adventist Hospital, about them adding some additional funding to increase the catchment area of who would be included in the survey, to make it broader than just people in Tacoma Park, but also people who use the hospital and who would use some kind of facility there in the future. And we wanted to check in with you all to see if you had any objections to us getting additional funding from the hospital to increase the distribution of the survey. From you all, we were hoping to acquire ten thousand dollars for the production of the survey, and Dr. Wu, one of our, one of our committee members, sort of broke that down into about three thousand dollars in photocopying, and about, little by the, four thousand dollars in, in mailing out a survey if we decide to go that way, although we're also looking into community meetings to help people who may not be as online or even written literate to fill out surveys, entering the survey into a database, um, and some contingency funds. So we have a little bit of a breakdown of how we use that ten thousand.
Okay.
I met with Jerry Stocks about four hours ago, actually, and was pleased to receive a commitment from Washington Adventist to provide funding for, as Lois mentioned, a survey that would be broader in scope than just, um, just the Tacoma Park households. In essence, the discussion that we had centered around the fact that by using a mail survey or using an online survey, there are large constituencies, important constituencies, elderly groups, low-income groups, the immigrant community, folks that are just not gonna get touched by those modes of administration. And with that in mind, I solicited from, from him unrestricted funds to expand the survey and use a survey research firm that could take an area probability sample and use, um, face-to-face interviews and various modes of administering a, a survey based on this, this, um, survey that you have in front of you, but to touch a larger group of folks within W.A.'s catchment area. I was pleased to receive a commitment from him, and, excuse me, one thing that we wanted to ask the council is, well, we'd like to ask the council to ask your general counsel how this sort of thing would work, you know? How does the city receive unrestrained, or unrestricted funds, um, which is what these would be? And then funnel, you know, act as a pass-through to a local survey research group that would be responsible for fielding this kind of a survey. Sort of, the legal, the legal machinations were just, you know, beyond us, and we figured that the, the city's council could, you know, advise us on that.
Um, I don't, I mean, we have done similar kinds of things, and I would turn to the city manager, but my assumption would be that it's doable. I think that the, the question would be, you know, the issue before the council is sort of the more the issue of, is the council agreeable to the notion, and does it want to dedicate the funds to doing that? I think, you know, those are more the difficult questions, and I assume, I'm looking at the city manager, and she will tell me no if I'm wrong, that I assume we could figure out how to do it if the council wanted to do it. But, well, why don't we let them finish their presentation?
To be clear, I just wanted to be clear, that the ten thousand dollars that we're requesting would solely be to administer the survey to residents of Tacoma Park, not to people, and not to, you know, administer or field the survey to people within W.A.'s catchment area. Uh, so we would not be using those funds for anything other than tapping into, you know, local households. Uh, I think that Washington Adventist has in mind surveying, you know, a slightly larger area, including groups in Silver Spring, Hyattsville, Langley Park, that sort of thing.
And then our, our second point after the survey is that, as a committee, we've talked a great deal about the possibility of expanding our role, not just to look at the impact of while leaving, but also to look at what the, um, what remains there, and what the Washington Adventist Hospital decides to do with that facility, how we, we are interested in taking that on as part of the mission of our committee, because we all have gathered all this knowledge about what people do use at the Adventist Hospital, what they would like to have there. And we see that as a natural continuation of the work that we've already been doing, and as a way for us to keep the healthcare needs of the community on the table with respect to what happens in that facility after the hospital leaves. We know that that's something that you've discussed, and we support that idea of expanding our committee. As chartered, we were supposed to have between twelve and fifteen members, and I think we only have eight. That's with Josh joining the committee, so we do have room for nine, Josh? So we do have room for, for six more or so, and we would like to take on that additional work as a natural progression from the work we've been doing.
Okay. My suggestion is that we deal with these one at a time.
Sure.
And so I guess what I would suggest that the council address is the issue of the survey, and the committee's recommendation to us is that we move forward with this survey, or presumably if somebody in the council got back to you with some fairly, not, you know, we would like for you to do it completely differently, but we would like you to do X, Y, and Z, that wouldn't be a problem. So I don't think we have to, we have to edit at this point.
And if people do get a chance to look it over and have specific comments about a question, or something they want to add or change slightly, we are meeting it on the eleventh, and if you send something to Vinita by the tenth, we would discuss that at our next meeting.
But I think the bigger question for the council is the, the notion of the survey and the notion of the, of the council investing funding in putting out and analyzing the survey. So that's, I think that would be the first question for us to take a look at.
What's the timeframe that you're envisioning for the survey?
Um, I spoke with, I used to work as a survey researcher, and I also spoke to a local firm, asking them about, asking them exactly that question. And I think from the time that, you know, funds were available to flow to, to an outside party, we anticipate ninety days from beginning to end of, at least, the fielding and the data entry. The analysis we did not anticipate is something that we would be farming out, and we also don't anticipate would be particularly difficult, and given the expertise of various members on the committee, I think that we can handle that ourselves fairly quickly, in a matter of, you know, a week to two.
So you'd like to do it in August, or December, or...
You mean, complete?
Yeah, when would you like to roll it out?
I'd like to...
People start filling in the blank?
Roll it out, or finish it up?
When are people gonna start filling in the blank?
Uh, in August, or at the latest, the end, or, you know, beginning of September. Some of it depends on, I think, probably vacation time, and, you know, when, whether or not people are around to begin the work.
But once we have the finalized survey itself, we can get that, at least, on an online form available, you know, pretty soon, you know, in two or three weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. How does that mesh with the other survey that the council's been working on for two years?
We're still trying to establish the timeline. I think what Vinita and I have talked to the survey company about is, truly, is more trying to focus on, kind of build up, if you will. We were gonna put an article in, in the city newsletter, trying to let people know that it was coming, with the hope of encouraging participation, with, by the time we took this to the council and got some changes made by the survey company, we're looking at either running an article in either the August or September edition of the newsletter.
Okay. So we could have some overlap we should be mindful of that.
Well, we're also considering, we, the committee also talked about perhaps putting an article in the newsletter as well, just explaining to people that, you know, we have this survey, giving them some update. We also are considering, the committee, of course, is considering tacking into the various organizations, like Victory Towers, the residents at Victory Towers, Franklin Apartments, to talk with them and encourage them to participate in the survey as well. So there's a number of efforts being made to, to channel out this information and also get input from the residents.
Yeah, I think we should just keep it in mind.
When, when is that survey plan come out, or you don't know exactly?
That's what I was just asking.
Yeah, it'll either be going out in August or September. I think that's something that we can basically talk about, make sure we're not over-serving. The survey the city is sending out is basically statistically valid, so it's going to a randomly-generated list, and so it's a much smaller pool of people than I think what you're talking about, which will be city-wide, as I understand it.
No, actually not. I actually, I thought that the, the community survey was actually a census survey. I didn't realize, we were not talking about doing a census survey. I think maybe we were talking about something fairly similar, although because we really wanna make sure we get representation from specific constituencies, we were thinking of an area probability sample that wouldn't just be, you know, random selection, say, from the entire census of seven thousand, whatever it is, households that we have in Tacoma Park.
So, but you were thinking of like oversampling groups like the elderly?
That's right.
I, I would hope that one of the things that you would do would be oversample low-income people. I think that's the population that I'm most concerned about, most concerned about what kinds of access they have now, and as well as what kinds of access they would have in the future, given this move. And I know you, you all have, in the forums that you've been planning, putting an emphasis on that population, and I would love to see you do that in the, in the survey also.
And that's what we are planning to have, again, have community meetings and to tap into the community leaders, or the natural leaders in some of these apartment buildings, and have them help get the survey filled out. We know they're folks who may not read, may not read very well, may be confused with filling out a form, may have poor eyesight, may not speak English as a first language. We do plan to have the survey available in Spanish as well, and then to go with the help of, of community leaders to some of the apartment buildings along Maple, back to Victory Towers, to Constance Merrill, and get input from the, those populations that you were mentioning. So that's definitely a priority of ours.
And we've already started communicating with some of the community leaders about doing some of that during the work day, so that we can have, to the elderly, for example, meet with them during lunch and some whatnot, and talk to them about the survey and get their assistance, or give them assistance in completing the survey.
With respect to the oversampling, three groups that we identified were low-income population, elderly, and the immigrant population, but if there are other groups that council members think that we really should oversample, we'd be all ears.
I don't think of one, or something like that, Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I thank you for all the work that you've put into this survey. I worked with the Tacoma Park Community Action Group and did a survey recently, and I can appreciate the difficulty you go through in trying to put a survey together, even when you have experience. There's a lot of, a lot of questions in here, and a lot of different possible answers that you put down, and it takes a lot of back and forth, I know, with committee members to do this. I have a couple of comments on questions, which I'll just send you separately in email, but I wanna make sure I understand, you're saying that, that you wanna do this survey, and you want the city to help with the funding with ten thousand dollars? But then what's the, the agreement that you made with Mr. Stocks?
The, the agreement, um, in a rough form, is that the funds that, that Washington Adventist will provide will be unrestricted, meaning they, they will have no ownership over the survey, they will, in essence, they will simply be giving us the money, because they will be, the hospital and the city are gonna be two primary beneficiaries, and Jerry, Jerry Stocks, I think appropriately so, has concluded that the hospital is frankly going to benefit more than anybody, and so...
Or at least as much. And, and how much money was he talking about?
I'd be happy to tell you offline, but until he talks to his boss, I'm not certain it would be prudent for me to, you know, share that.
So there's an amount of money that, that they're gonna contribute towards getting this done, and you're thinking of using that money for a, a commercial survey company to produce this?
That's correct. Basically, this would be, think of this as the base survey, that the, that the commercial survey company would use to add some skip patterns, to probably rearrange the questions. Some questions would go to certain populations and not others, say, the elderly population might get a slightly, you know, different version.
Okay. And they might refine your questions?
That's right.
So that my email would be unnecessary?
Not necessarily. I think you should send the email anyway.
All right, and then the hospital may want to use that same survey then, and expand the survey area to...
Exactly.
For some of their clients outside of Tacoma Park, or their service area outside of Tacoma Park. All right, I guess that's all the questions I have on this part of what we're talking about. There's other subjects we'll talk about next.
Just one question for Barb, and that is whether this proposal, whether it be possible to add this to the survey firm's contract that we currently have?
We could certainly explore that with, um, depending on the amount, it might have to come back to the city council, obviously, because I think the amounts that we're talking about would exceed, you know, my authority administratively, but that's certainly something. Vinita actually also is the point person on the staff for that survey, so she could certainly make that call this week, if that's something that the committees and the council are interested in exploring.
That'd be helpful. I'd be interested in that information.
I, I understand your hesitancy in naming the amount of the money to the hospital, but are we talking about the same ballpark as what you're asking for the city, from the city?
No.
Okay.
All right. And why not?
Um, it seems to me, a couple of things here. It seems to me that this, this survey is a very good idea, and I, I think that there's some very useful things contained in the survey. It also seems to me that there's a number of sort of alternatives that we could still explore in terms of, you know, what the hospital might contribute, how much it might cost to have it done professionally, whether we could piggyback it on our, on our current contract. I would be willing to, at this point, agree to commit some city funding for this, with the amount being to be determined. Would that, do you think that moves us forward at this point, given that we have so many things up in the air?
Do you know when you would determine it?
Um, I guess that it's when we would get answers to some of the additional questions, perhaps. Do you have a, do you have a thought in terms of timing? Do you have a thought in terms of timing?
In terms of getting an answer back from the survey company?
Well, it seems to me, looking at the hospital's contribution to it would be one question. Looking at how much a survey firm would cost, whether it be this survey firm or another one, would be another thing. But I think that what you're doing is very valuable. I think that the information from the survey would be something that would be very useful to us in dealing with the hospital. It could be very interesting and continue to be very useful if the hospital had, you know, the exact access to, the exact same access to the information as we did. I think that could be helpful. So I'm willing to be supportive of the survey, even if it means-
Could we possibly approve an amount of money and let Barb administer it so that she protects the best interest of the city in selecting of the vendor and also in limiting the amount based on?
The request is for $10,000. What's the council's thought about that?
And I would say that we approve up to $10,000 that let Barb administer that and keep it as low as possible as she usually does.
Okay. It sounds like the council's agreeable to that, so I think that makes a certain amount of sense.
Mayor, if I may just mention one thing that I'll need to check with the city attorney. Since the committee is essentially an extension of the city, one thing that I think we'll just need to be cognizant of is I think the committee and anything it wishes to do probably falls under the city's procurement regulation, so I think that's something that we'll need to keep in mind because that triggers certain bidding requirements if we're not piggybacking onto either an existing city contract or one that's in place for another jurisdiction. So that's something I can talk to the city attorney about this week.
Thank you.
And that's why I want you to be in control.
In addition, Barb, just in council, the number includes a couple of different resources. So it's not any one particular company that would get all of it unless we decided that we wanted to use a particular research company, as Drew was referring to. If we wanted to do it, if we decided that we wanted to do the mailing on our own and not use the hospital's assistance or whatever, then it would be using a separate entity and a much lesser amount that needs to be part of its procurement.
Okay. All right, so we've got that. The second point that you brought forward was essentially a request to the council. You feel that the, you'd like to have the responsibility for the use of the site also given to this committee. And I think we had a different viewpoint presented to the council in the public comment period, which I thought Eileen did a good job of presenting that point of view. I think there's, on the one hand, on the other hand with this, you're collecting some of the information in this survey that would go into a discussion of what went on the site. And it would be helpful if people who were concerned about that, I think, were part of your discussion of what went into the survey. The other thing is that sort of, I guess, leads me to believe that it ought to be combined, is that the time we started talking about this first, the assumption was that WA was going to sell the property and that the property would be available for essentially any use. If WA holds onto the property, that doesn't mean that it could be used for any use, but it does significantly suggest that the property be used for some healthcare use. And if it were, if it was most likely to be used for a healthcare use, then I think it becomes very similar to the work that you're doing. At the public forum that we had, and admittedly, there, you know, there were maybe a couple dozen people at the public forum, there did seem to be a strong interest in having the site continue to be used for a healthcare use. Now, you know, who knows if you had a bigger group, whether that would still be true or not. But if that, if one starts with that assumption, then I think the two committees become even more similar in their jurisdictions. So that would be another thing for the council to take a look at.
And I think WA has made it clear to us as individuals and to some other groups in the community that I'm involved with and on their website for expanding access or something, some little website, some expanded access.
Vision, expanded vision, yeah.
And also through those of us, and I know many of you in the city have had meetings with Dynamis, which is the consulting firm that they are working with to help figure out what goes on there, they have made it clear in all of these forums that they are planning to keep some healthcare facility in that, on that property.
Okay.
Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciated it when I came to the last open forum, you had all the information that was available then. When this first started and we talked about having a healthcare committee, I actually wanted to have the land use committee. That was very important to me and I wanted to staff it at that time and it never did happen at that time. And I think in part that's because there was great hope that we could work out some other arrangement other than leaving town. And I had a conversation with you and some of the other folks after you expressed an interest to add people to the committee to look at the site planning. And I still have some concerns about that, although I'm open to the idea of having that task at least somehow integrated into the community. But I do think it's a really different issue and I guess my concern with having the two groups together is while it seems like to some extent it's, there's a natural marriage there, part of the initial argument for having the health services committee was that we were really gonna look at health services overall for Tacoma Park and it wasn't just gonna be a committee to lobby the hospital and that as such it would be able to look at, you know, different areas and what would be the best mechanism for funding them. I think that's worked out really well. My concern is that while you have all the complexities of the healthcare field and we're fortunate to have people who are all versed in that, there are a lot of complexities to the land use and siting issues and to a large extent, there's a very different constituency of those. And I think we need to find a way to address that, that there's this very different constituency, that there's a very different skill set essentially related to the site planning issues, but that these things are related. So, you know, throw that out there. One of the things that I had said, because the mayor was definitely very supportive of the idea of holding it in the same committee, is that if we do that, I think we also as a city need to provide a lot of resources to whatever group it is that does the planning and site use portion of this. But I would still like there to be some separation between the meetings and functions, but yet coordination. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I think there's important reasons to do that. And the other thing is that I'm concerned about the hospital and as much as I appreciate my conversations that I have with the hospital administration, I am concerned about the idea of a really large piece of property and exactly how much healthcare services they're gonna provide. And as much as they provide is great, but what that's gonna leave on this property for development and what that development is gonna look like and feel like to the community, but also, you know, it's owned by a nonprofit entity and as such, you know, it's not a tax resource to the community. And I guess what I don't wanna have is a little bit of healthcare on a corner of the site and a lot of usage of the site that's not healthcare related, that generates costs to the city in infrastructure and public works and policing and those other kinds of things. And that's just a really whole different set of dynamics than the healthcare and it's a lot to ask any one committee to move forward with in the short time period, which I think is also an argument for having at least two groups, but groups that are, you know, well-coordinated. So that's my input.
It just, as a point of information, if Washington Adventist ceases to have a hospital on that site, they lose their special exception and it reverts to single-family home. And anything that would need, that differs from the single-family home and is not an acceptable special exception on that site would have to go through a rezoning process, which we have a fair amount of.
Yeah.
It still doesn't stop me from being concerned though.
Yeah. And I'll let you speak, Eileen, but I wanna let the council have a chance.
I share Colleen's thoughts on this. I think the land use issues are pretty distinct from, because I heard a lot of conversation from Jerry and others that they were thinking of having a place where entrepreneurs could rent an office, where nonprofits could rent an office. I heard speculation about health facilities like a gym and all kinds of other things thrown around on that site. It was not really, it was very varied. It went far afield from health-oriented stuff. And I really share Colleen's concerns here and that we need folks on the committee who can, really, who have knowledge of that kind of stuff and who can spend time thinking about it. So I actually support having a separate committee.
Hello, Kellman?
Sure.
When this resolution, the resolution that created this committee was formed, it called for 12, a committee of 12 to 15 members. For a while, I think we were running, we had 10 briefly, but then we had six or seven for a long time and I guess we're at eight now or something. I agree with what Councilmember Clay said earlier about, you know, the skill sets being different. I'm not sure, I felt like you said two different things, actually. You talked about two different constituencies and then you talked about two different skill sets. I'm with you on the skill sets. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I followed or agreed with you about the two different constituencies.
That's because you fall into both sets of constituencies, but there are a lot of people who contact me that are interested in the site planning that aren't necessarily interested in the health services.
I guess I can understand that. Anyway, with only eight people on our committee and at least three or four people that I know of that are sort of sitting in the wings who do have skills as planners and are interested in getting involved, I thought that there was room on this committee and still think there's room on this committee to add, you know, fresh expertise, you know, fresh blood, new perspectives without having the committee be, you know, overly large. And I'm not certain if we split into the two committees that we're actually going to have two committees of, you know, that are large enough that we get a representative sample of, I'd like these committees, if there are two committees or one committee, it doesn't matter, I would hope that our committees represent different constituencies within Tacoma Park. For a while, our committee didn't look like it was representing, you know, we had no apartment dweller or we had no one who was African-American or we had no one who was elderly. Some of those things are still the case, some of them aren't, but we look more like a swath of random Tacoma Park, you know, residents now than we did, say, six or seven months ago. And if you get two committees going, I think the new committee might face the same problems that we faced early on. And so I think that we'd be better served to sort of play off one another's strengths, be their planning strengths or, you know, expertise in the provision of healthcare and keep it in one group.
Additionally, we are hearing from people in our, in our community forums and people who have contacted us and what we hope to hear in our survey is what people need and want with respect to healthcare in Tacoma Park. And some of the things, you know, will come up no surprise, like the folks from Tacoma, from Victory Towers who can hop on the ride-on bus and get off at the hospital, even if they're primary caregivers at Washington Hospital Center, they can go get their labs drawn every six weeks at the hospital. And that proximity to where they live is of utmost importance. We've heard from people who frankly don't have the time to take public transportation out to White Oak and go to their appointments and then come back and have time to go to work and do everything that they need to do. So we're hearing what the concrete needs are for people in this community vis-à-vis their healthcare and we wanna make sure that those issues remain on the table with the site planning. And as you know, I don't come from a background of planning or land use, but I am familiar with what are the health needs of Tacoma Park and the people in Tacoma Park. And we don't want that very important issue, which is our mission to be able to concretely tell you all what we think the health needs are in Tacoma Park. We don't want that to get lost with a separate committee who's looking at the very important issues of water runoff, the preservation of the park, probably issues of green buildings and the things you brought up, you know, policing the area. We don't want what people want in healthcare to get lost. And what we've learned from the year of collective experience, which will be more than a year when this happens, we feel that our knowledge is very important to stay at the table with what happens with that site. And we feel we've also developed a very good working relationship with Washington Adventist Hospital and they're interested in hearing what we think and what we've heard and that's another way of making sure that the healthcare needs of the community stay at the table with what happens after the hospital leaves.
Let me ask Eileen, who wanted to add to what she said. I don't know if you all were here when she made her first statement, so maybe you can just repeat a little bit.
Thank you. And I really wanna thank Drew and Lois for their work on this committee because I think it's really important and I have come to some of their forums and-
Is your microphone on? I can't think.
Come sit at the table where the table might-
Sure.
You know, I think that this is a valuable committee and I have had input into it and I'd like to continue, but I think that as Colleen and Ruben have said, there's some overlapping issues, but they're not, they're just not identical. And it seems to me that part of the mission of the existing committee is if certain WA functions are going to leave, how are the health needs, health needs of our community going to be met, given that, you know, there might not be an inpatient facility at WA anymore? And so that's an issue that no matter, even if the number one view of the constituent, constituency of Tacoma Park was we want an inpatient facility here, that might not be an option on the table. I mean, it's important to know that that would, it would be important to know that that would be a priority of our community, but it's not clear that that would be part of what a group looking at the land use options would look at. And interestingly, the WA consultant doesn't say what are the health, health use-related priorities that you would like to see. They say, don't be restricted by anything. When they conduct interviews with community members, they're saying, the sky's the limit, you know, do you wanna see Disneyland here? Do you wanna see a full-service hospital? I think that the missions, if there are two committees, the missions have to be closely related and we have to take the healthcare needs of the community and hold them in high regard and high priority. But I think that we would be better served by working in tandem and trying to marry the missions in some constructive way. And I don't, I don't think anybody could undervalue the health needs of the community. I think that that's been apparent in the five-plus years that I've been working on this issue, that people are very concerned about losing health services if WA is leaving. But that, that doesn't, you know, that, maybe we need some people who are willing to serve on both committees, but I think that you guys have spent a long, a long year coming up with a survey and trying to figure out, you're gonna have a few tough months trying to make sure that it gets out there and gets answered by the right number of people. And that's gonna be a hard mission to fulfill and I think that to expand that and take on a much broader range of land use options on top of that is really gonna be a lot. And I think that maybe a, you know, two committees with overlapping missions and with a directive from the council to coordinate at the leadership level and some joint forums in common maybe is the way to go because this is really, as both Councilmember Clay and Councilmember Snipper has said, you know, this is really a dual, there are two questions here. What, what kind of health services do our community, does our community need? And if WA is going to leave, what, what should remain, what should be done with that property, given that they have ultimate control of it? And there may be some health services and there may be other, other uses for that property as well.
My perspective is a little bit different, but I would agree that if there was to be more than one committee, I don't see them necessarily proceeding on parallel tracks and, and never converging. I think the convergence can be built in and designed into the system. But the concerns that I have is that, are that, first, it's, you know, these are, these are very complex issues in, in both the land use part of it and the, what kind of healthcare should be provided there. And they do require different expertise. And there are people, I think, for the land use committee, there, there are sufficient numbers and background, so I don't think we'd have a problem with recruiting for that one. The other concern I have is, and the council obviously would like a complete and fulsome analysis of the options on the land use side. And related to that is, is I don't want to see these things go on interminably for, for years until the next ice age. You know, we need to move fairly rapidly in both of these areas, and I think we would have more luck doing so with more than one committee looking at those very important questions that have been raised. So for those reasons, the, the speed and dispatch and also the complexity and specialization of the information that's needed on both sides, I think I would come down on the side of having two committees.
I think, I think, given the discussion, we're almost to the point where it's becoming a bit semantic. I think, if I'm hearing my colleagues, there is an interest in having, whether they're one or two, having them work very closely together. And I think that's absolutely essential. Because I, I would agree that if each committee doesn't benefit from the work of the other, it's, we're wasting our time. And I think that that would be important. And so I guess at this point, my suggestion would be, and I don't care which way it goes, having a single committee with two subcommittees or having two committees with some membership in common. If that, I mean, this is sort of, it's a sort of a semantic difference between the two. But, but I think two things should be, should be clear, that there should be some formal way of, of communication between the two, more than just saying you talk to each other, but at least having some members in common. Now, that means that these poor folks are going to have to go to twice as many meetings, and so that may or may not be feasible. Well, the other way to do it is to have two subcommittees of the same committee and requiring that the full committee meets on a regular basis so that both groups be, are required to meet together on a regular basis. But either way, I think you have to do both of those things. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I think, first of all, I'm disappointed that we don't have better participation at this point in the healthcare committee. It's, the health services committee, it's a, you know, of utmost importance to this community. And I think that it's something that this council needs to do a better job of outreach to our constituents to make sure that the committee gets refilled. And I would also like to suggest that although residents, people who reside outside of Tacoma Park can't be on the official committee, I think that the committee should invite people from outside the city to participate in the committee. The, there are a number of nonprofit organizations who have a very big interest in healthcare in the down county area, specifically in Tacoma Park and Silver Spring area. And I think they could bring a lot of resources to the committee. And I would suggest that, that you reach out to those organizations and see if they would like to participate at some level with the committee. As far as the, the land use, I think the hospital deciding to retain the property has changed the dynamics of our, of what's going to happen there and what we need to do quite a bit. I think it makes it clear that, you know, it's going to, some healthcare use is going to be there. So I, I agree that you have to be involved, this health services committee has to be involved to a great extent with the, with the decisions and the recommendations for land use. I also hope that the hospital is looking at other potential uses for that. And so I think it's important to also include at that table the people who aren't so interested or focused on the health services but are focused on the other parts of the development effort. So I'll not play semantics and just follow Mayor Porter's lead on wherever she's going with that.
Well, I mean, since I'm not the person who's going to have to go to all these meetings, I was going to see if the, the members of the committee and other interested parties, as I look at Eileen, have any sort of thoughts on whether there's any way we can combine the, the need for very, not just communication, I think it's beyond communication. I think that two groups or the single group with two parts have to work together. But I do appreciate the, the issues about the, the different, I don't think there's so much different constituencies, I think there, but I do think that there is some issue of different skill sets. And I wonder if you all have any thoughts about ways that it could be done without making everybody's life miserable.
I would also defer to our committee, who do have a good representation, if they have any thoughts on that.
Well, you're going to have to come up to the microphone or the folks at home won't be able to hear you. It doesn't seem to be. Why don't you sit at the table?
Josh, why don't you come up to it?
I would say, one, it's clear to us that we need to add new members, a member to the committee. That's quite clear. I, I feel that perhaps two committees might end up at loggerheads with each other. That's just a possibility. Hopefully that wouldn't happen. I, I think the idea of perhaps a single committee adding to the committee and seeking to add persons with the additional skill sets would be a possibility. And I'm listening to your comments about the importance of these two separate groups or focuses at least, working closely together. And I, I think that adding additional persons, bringing the committee up to maybe the, the original size that, that was not necessarily mandated, but was, was certainly thrown out as a possible twelve, fifteen, would be a good working group. And I think if you have, have people working together with the additional skill sets, that probably you could get quite a bit done. We, in our informal discussions about this, talked about maybe two groups, maybe of subcommittees, maybe two working groups, which would meet together but perhaps break out and, and have separate sessions and then come back together would be a, a, a good possibility and, and a, and a good working relationship. My personal impression is that the two issues are related and there is quite a bit of overlap. And with the progress of the hospitals' process, processes, that it's becoming increasingly important that somebody be working on the site use issues. And I think you folks need to decide, but I think from our standpoint, I think we agree that somebody needs to be addressing that. And with the overlap, we, we feel that it's kind of, it's getting, it's kind of important. I'm, I would not be opposed to the additional, you know, a separate committee. That was way back early on, that was certainly thrown out. But it was felt that, that the actual move and so, at the time this committee was set up, the hospital had not purchased land elsewhere. And that has happened now. And so that side of the issue is becoming more and more important. And we're, we're seeing that, that the linkage and the overlap and the relationship between the two issues are, from our standpoint, they're very important. And I think we feel that it's important that, that we have somebody that we can work with or that persons with, with that interest and, and. We, we do have some people, our newest member, Josh, has planning background. I think I'm correct in saying.
More realistic development, but yeah.
But anyway, he's, he's, has background that, that reflects that, that side of, or that issue more. Vanita has planning background and experience. I think Colleen said that she thought that she had persons that she could recommend if, if the council saw fit in mandating that this committee take on the additional responsibility. I guess, I guess a, a, a separate working groups would be a possibility or, or, and/or bringing in people with the additional skills would be a possibility.
Okay, why don't you come up to the table?
Josh, do you?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think just two things. Inextricably, the, the two issues are linked because the hospital has pretty much said in, in every conversation that I've been relating to me that they're going to leave something there that has to do with healthcare. Not exactly sure what it is, but there's going to be something there. And the second thing is, we are negotiating with one entity. So to have two different committees talking separately to the hospital about what needs are, I think it's going to get confusing. So, and, and then the last thing is, I think we need to try and do things quickly because one of our pressure points of the hospital is coming up as they apply for their certificate of need. And I think we want to be able to have a, an opinion from the city on, an early opinion on what we want there. So I would propose this from a logistical, that we have one committee with two subcommittees and it can probably work something like every time we meet, we meet at the beginning for a brief period of time that, where we address the common issues that need to be discussed. And then we, we break off and the subcommittee that's doing land use focuses on that and the health services focuses on that. And if you, that would prevent us from having to, I'm interested in both issues, but it would be difficult for me to be going to both committee meetings all the time. And I think that would kind of make the best use of people's time, allow us to move with the greatest expedience. And also, I think it's very important that we bring more members to the table that have the skill, but also just more people from the community. This was a contentious issue when the hospital was thinking about expanding the way they were, and people in the community were very upset. And I would hate to have, it'd be a situation where some subset of people on a, on a committee that didn't reflect the opinions of the entire community come up with something that people aren't truly happy with. So that would be my perspective.
I'm Fred Hoffman, I'll be quick, I believe. I think there's been lots of ideas about what healthcare might be provided at the site. I think the hospital's probably thinking the same way. In my opinion, getting that defined and what it will cost and how it will be paid for will dictate the land use question. The land use question will follow that, therefore I think defining the healthcare and the financing of it. Comes in first. Thanks.
Did you want to say anything?
Yes, I'm Joanne Wu, a member of the committee, but I'm going to speak as an individual, if you don't mind. I'm someone with an interest in both committees or both subcommittees. Prior to my life as a healthcare practitioner, I was an ecosystem biologist. And I recall from watching the May first public forum, and one of the concerns raised was the effects on the cycle creek watershed. And, and really speaking from both points of view, the health of the watershed, the health of people in it are inextricably linked. You can't separate them. So to answer your question about what would be the best way, I, I guess I would pass my, my vote for having two subcommittees that, that connects pretty regularly. And I think having two subcommittees would encourage us to be a little more organized, a little more disciplined about communicating than having two separate committees.
Okay. Eileen, did you want to add something?
I just forgot to make a, the organizational point. I think there should be two separate committees and that they, there should be an executive group of, of each committee that should meet on a regular basis and that should have to coordinate each other's reports. And we should be given a timetable that we're held to by the council. I think that the healthcare committee or health services committee needs to actually think beyond the site. They need to think about services that our community needs that actually can't be provided by law and whatever's left on the site. And I, I think that actually having the same committee consider the onsite use will actually limit in a way that's not good, the health services committee. Because I think that part of the mandate of that committee was to look at what the broader health services need of the community were, given that, that the present services were going to diminish if, in some respect, if law leaves. And so they need to look beyond the site, which I think is a really important goal of that subcommittee. On the other hand, the land use part of that needs to focus on not only what the health services part is that's left, but whatever else is left. And from everything law says right now, there will be some health services left, but they could change their minds and they could sell to a developer. There's, there's no promises about what they're going to do on the site. And I think that the land use part of this equation needs to look at all of the alternatives, even those beyond health services, whatever health services are, are left on site and need to prioritize so that if we know that if health services being onsite, even if law doesn't want to provide them, that we think about options to do that. I think the best thing is committees that coordinate through an exec, through executive committees and coordinate reports and have a joint report is probably the way to go.
Mayor Porter?
I mean, I'm willing to be on, I'm willing to coordinate and be on both committees, but I think that getting more, you know, you're going to get two separate sets of people that are interested in these issues on the committees. You want to recruit up to twelve and you want another six or seven members, it's going to come at this point probably from the land use community that are, people that are interested.
Mayor Porter, I would like to suggest that we reach a, an agreement with the Adventist Hospital before they get their certificate of need from the state. And to do that, I think we're going to have to end this meeting soon and make a decision about the, the, how we proceed.
My understanding is that they haven't even applied for the certificate of need yet.
I don't, but that.
And it could be a year-long process.
We haven't seen the end of this meeting yet either.
But I think we need to, we need to participate earlier. I guess what I would suggest, in order to minimize the number of meetings that people have to go to, that there be a single unit which is composed of two separate entities that can have two separate groups of people in them, but that they have joint meetings at least occasionally. Not necessarily every time they meet, but that they have joint meetings at least occasionally. I think that will essentially mandate some, some conversation back and forth, but the two entities can be made up of separate people. That would be my suggestion.
And if the groups actually force themselves to schedule their, their, you know, monthly or bimonthly meetings at the same time, people who are crazy enough to join both committees theoretically could have the opportunity to do so if there were available seats. Eileen just mentioned that she would be, you know, interested in, or willing to sit on both, for instance.
Is that everything you need, Mark?
Colleen. So after hearing all of the various comments, do you both still feel like the best thing to do is to integrate the land use into the health services committee?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I was going to say, I don't think that that's what's on the table at the moment.
But before I can say anything, I, I wanted to hear back.
I think it's in the best interest of the community to have one single committee. And I think that the, the way I see the committee progressing is that we do the, the healthcare needs and of the community vis-à-vis the survey and the community meetings. From there, we look at what's left at the hospital in terms of provision of healthcare. And then from there, you look at issues of impact of land use, whatever you're looking at, you know, parking, the, the health and safety of the creek, and that they all follow in a progression. And I think there should be one committee to assure that healthcare remains. And I think there should be one committee to assure that healthcare remains first and foremost at that site, and that, that be a priority for the Adventist and for the city of Tacoma Park.
And what I put on the table is actually a little bit different than that. I'm actually suggesting that the healthcare, the health services committee continue on as it has been doing, that we create another committee, another group, group, subcommittee, working group, made up of different people, but that they both be part of the same entity. And the reason I'm interested in doing that is to mandate essentially communication between the two on a regular basis.
Well, why don't we, why don't we set up a land use committee and a healthcare committee and create an executive committee out of three members from each group that meets on an ongoing basis?
Because those, for those six people, they'd have twice as many meetings.
I imagine that there might be, well, how about up to six, then?
I think at this point, we're splitting hairs. I don't have a strong, I don't have a strong feeling about one way or the other. If the council feels that we have a, an overall committee, that there's two committees underneath it, or they feel we've got two separate groups, and that they have a, an executive group in common that meets in addition to the two committees, I think we're down to the point of, you know, dancing angels on the head of a pin, and I think either one of those will do it. But that's, I think that's where we are. And maybe we can refine it when it stops after eleven o'clock at night. Bruce?
I think the thing that convinced me that it should be, in essence, one overall committee is that the point that was made, that the, the focus of this is WA, and that that's one entity, and that we need to kind of speak with one voice to them, and to the extent that we can integrate things into one with the two separate pieces, that that's the way to go.
Excellent point.
Okay, so, maybe we can hammer out the final details, but we're either to a single committee with two working groups, or two separate committees that have a joint executive committee in common.
And I appreciate what you said about this executive committee and twice as many meetings, and the reality is, both of the chairs of this committee have small children at home and demanding jobs, and it has been a stretch. And we walked in, and you were talking about issues of, of compensation, and albeit small, there still is compensation, and we're doing this as a volunteer committee. And I think that it would be very dilute if we had to go to twice as many meetings. In fact, personally, I would probably resign, because I can't take on twice as many meetings for this project right now.
Yeah, and I, and I think one of the things that we would probably have to take a look at is, I think both, it, it seems to me that there is, in fact, some different groups of people who might be interested in these different kinds of things. And I think you have to respect the different skill sets, if you will, we keep calling it that. But at the same time, I do agree with you that they do need to work together, and that's what I think we're, it seems like we're to the point of we're all aiming at the same thing, and we're down to something that's, you know, trying to figure out the best way to work.
I think your point is excellent about we're approaching WA with one single voice and coming to consensus as a large committee, with input from council, with input from planning folks, with input from environmental folks, with input from health folks, and going with one solid voice. Because we, we know that the relationship between WA and the city and the community has been strained at times, and we want to make sure that in this next phase of working with WA, that we work by consensus from the community. Because there was no consensus when WA was trying to expand or trying to figure out what to do. And I think that in part frustrated them, which is why they decided to look elsewhere. And I think the more we maintain a united voice, the better off we are with getting what we want out of them.
I would like to suggest that since this is a work session, and nothing is compelling us to make the decision that we're unwilling to make, but we certainly, we certainly have heard enough input that we can make this decision another time. And I would respectfully submit that we should go home.
Well, that's, I think, where I was coming out, too, that I, I very much appreciate everybody who came and made very persuasive arguments, and I think we're really close, and we can sort of, you know, hammer out the, the final details at a later point. And we can, at some point, we're going to have to take an action at that point. I think we'll have the opportunity to talk about the final details, so. I do appreciate the time that you all have spent, and I know it's late, and really don't want to take up more of your time. I know, Drew, you've got things that you have to go home and do.
I do. I have a quick comment that I'd like to make as a takeaway point. When you do consider this at a later date, something that's come up, you may have heard this already from dynamist folks who have come to interview you or not, I'm not sure, but something that comes up regularly and came up today in my meeting with Jerry is, you know, this notion of possibly keeping an urgent care or emergency room facility onsite, and what sort of holes that would leave. One of them is, you know, great, put an urgent care center on the site, but that still doesn't help out with, you know, primary care needs, you know, in and around the city. I bring this up only because, as we've discussed land use issues here tonight and planning issues, we've only talked about the campus. And I really think that whatever happens on that campus is also going to affect what may, you know, happen elsewhere in Tacoma Park. And I think that's another reason to sort of keep the land use planning experts close to the, you know, healthcare provision experts, because they are so integral in WA's mind and frankly, in mine as well.
Somebody else gave that same rationale for having two separate groups, who hasn't been known. But I think, I, I appreciate it, I appreciate your staying, Drew. As I said, I know you and I had talked about the other demands you have at home this evening, and I appreciate your staying this late. I appreciate everybody, and I think we're really close to a common solution, and it's just because of the lateness of the hour, we may just not be able to reach it tonight, but we will, and we will, of course, keep you all informed about future discussions of this. We're not going to do it without you, so. Thank you all very much, and we will, we will cross the final ten percent at a later date. Thank you, and thank you for your expertise and advice. I appreciate it.
Go ahead.